Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We are working with these technical difficulties. If you could bear with us, we'll be starting shortly. Thank you. We are back. Welcome to the June 17th Work Session of the Board of Education of Charles County. Please stand for a further agreement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I want to briefly share the mission of the Board of Education of Charles County. The mission of Charles County Public Schools is to provide an opportunity for all students to receive an academic and challenging quality education that builds character, equips for leadership, and prepares for life in an environment that is safe and conducive to learn. First up, we're going to have the swearing in of our new student board member, Ms. Samberg. Ms. Samberg. Swearing in will be the clerk of the Charles County Circuit Court, Ms. Duthie. Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Can we repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Samberg. I, Summer J. Samberg.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Be faithful and true allegiance?
Be faithful and we are fair, true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland?
To the State of Maryland.
And to support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of?
Execute the office of?
State Board of Education?
State Board of Education.
Accordant Constitution?
Accordant Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
Congratulations, Sam, and welcome. He officially begins his term on July 1st. All right, next up is the moment you have all been waiting for. We are thrilled to celebrate all of our many, many state award winners.
I believe Ms. Moes is first up, or Dr. Jones?
Okay, Dr. Jones.
Justice, justice. All right, so, sorry to go out of order if I am going out of order, but last, at our last board meeting, we had one outstanding Support Staff Personnel Award that we were not able to give, and so we are taking just a moment to give that award to that person tonight, if that person is here, and as that person begins to make their way toward the other front, I'm going to go ahead and start with Myra Moss. Good evening, Board Chairman, sorry, Board Chair Moore Lee, Vice Chair Kramer, Board Members, Dr. Marrowstaff, and special guests. Tonight, it is my privilege and honor to introduce our Outstanding Support Staff of the Year Award recipient, Ms. Angelia Willet, especially known as Angelia. But for the formality of the rest of the evening, I will refer to the names of Ash Ms. Willet. I play by the rules. Ms. Willet has faithfully served Charles County Public Schools in several different capacities, all of which in true loyal support of children, families, staff, and colleagues for the better part of 26 years. Like many of us, her expertise began in the classroom as a substitute teacher in several different schools around the county, and it was there that Ms. Willet obviously learned the importance of, and ultimately fell in love with, the concept of outstanding customer service in the school setting. Ms. Willet would go on to photograph and facilitate backing and fostering the growth and development of many schools and district leaders over the years.
Having served as Secretary for Miss Penny and I at Kramer Elementary School, Ms. Carol Evelyn Tulow Elementary School, Ms. Kathy Perrello and Kathy Kiesling at Smallwood Middle School, Mr. Keith Hettle, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Ms. Amy Holstein, Deputy Superintendent, and the current Chief of Schools, yours truly. And if you know any of us, you know that Ms. Willet has indeed put up with, I mean, worked with, a cast of characters over the years. Through it all, however, my having known her long before we worked together, I can truly attest that Ms. Willet is the most consistent person I've ever worked with as it relates to ensuring that the best possible customer service is always provided. And I say long before we worked together because from a distance, as far, as far back as my principal tenure between 2006 and 2013, I vividly remember that while Ms. Willet served as the Principal Secretary at Batula and then Executive Assistant in Human Resources, she had the most pleasant demeanor and sincere desire to be helpful whenever I would call, whether I was calling for Carol at the school or Keith at the office. And by all accounts, she's always approached her work in this way, and it is not an understatement to say that every interaction with Ms. Willet leaves the participating party pleasantly satisfied either with the actual outcome or the recommended guidance for additional assistance. This is the essence of who Ms. Willet is, the complete balance of knowledge, resourcefulness, work ethic, and congeniality regarding the provision of helpful support and outstanding service to others. If you wonder what she does when she's not coaching and providing professional learning to colleagues, i.e. Oracle, or creatively cleaning up board meeting presentations, scheduling contract negotiation sessions, overseeing graduation preparation, managing office and school orders, expenditures, requisitions, monitoring staff leave, coordinating calendars, facilitating effective communication with schools, organizing principal meetings, agendas, and meals, and so what does she do when she's not doing all that? She schedules and arranges interviews and onboarding, proof reads and edits correspondence, troubleshoots, technology, plans memorial services, schedules professional conferences, collaborates with colleagues, plans office celebrations, keeps meet organized, and most importantly, makes sure we keep coffee in the office. This is just a snippet of all what Ms. Willet does on and off the clock, and so when there's a request for her to visit her daughter in Italy, what am I going to say? No? I think not. Ms. Willet has more than earned the time she requests to be off, but beyond that, she is so deserving of this, of this award for all of these reasons, because really, for just how she handles her business in general, is indeed how Ms. Willet operates. Knowing that the list of duties I spouted off are just the tip of the iceberg of all Ms. Willet does, you would think she would be stressed out, snippy and short with people. But how many of us have ever seen that side of Ms. Willet? Well, maybe just a few of us behind closed doors, but you get the idea. Ms. Willet is the epitome of professionalism all day, every day, and what makes her stand out is her personal demeanor and desire to share her talents, and she is as genuine as they come, truly one in a million. As a result, it is unquestionably agreed that Ms. Willet should be the hands-down winner of this award, as she has earned it without even trying. Please join me now in congratulating our Outstanding Support Staff of the Year Award recipient, Ms. Angelia Willet, especially known as Angel.
We're going to do a quick picture, Marvin.
To make it all official, we had to give her something special here.
Yes, and we're going to do a quick picture.
Is the name announced?
Yes. Where do you want the pictures?
A little board is going to get in. I think we should do it in the middle.
Okay.
Forgive my lack of talent and ad libbing as I read from the notes that I made earlier today. Afternoon greetings, Board Members, Dr. Navarro, Senior Leadership, and other guests. Being honored with the Outstanding Support Personnel Award in the Central Office category feels incredibly surreal. Many others equally deserve this recognition, one of whom holds a special place in my heart. When my incredible team surprised me with the announcement on May 6th, it took some time for the news to sink in. You see, I often liken myself to a worker bee, quietly supporting behind the scenes without seeking any special acknowledgement and without complaint. Well, no complaints most of the time. I feel incredibly fortunate to work with a rock star leader who always inspires greatness in others, Dr. Marvin Jones, Chief of Schools, alongside a remarkable team dedicated to serving our schools with the best interests of our scholars at the forefront of everything that we do. I am abundantly blessed with a supportive family who truly understands my dedication to my job and allows me to do what I do best. You guessed it, work. In conclusion, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the many colleagues at the Central Office and in the schoolhouses, the principals, who played a pivotal role in making this moment possible. With respect, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Willet, and now I apologize, Board Members, and Dr. Navarro. Now we will get to the moment you've been waiting for, these families have been waiting for, the announcement of our state winners. We will begin with our Content Specialist for Gifted Services, Ms. Kristin Moes.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, Board Members, Dr. Navarro, and distinguished guests. My name is Kristin Moes, Content Specialist for Gifted and Differentiated Services and the Destination Imagination Blue Crab Regional Director. Thirty-two Charles County DI teams were among 114 teams to participate at the Maryland Destination Imagination Tournament held on Saturday, March 16th, at the University of Maryland Baltimore County. Two Charles County Public Schools teams earned first place at the Maryland Tournament and took their creativity, complex problem-solving, and 21st century skills to the next level as they competed against teams from all over the globe during the 2024 Destination Imagination Global Finals Tournament held in Kansas City, Missouri, May 22nd through May 26th. If the principals would please approach the steps to congratulate your students. Walter J. Mitchell's What's the Dog Doing Team, sponsored by Deanna Gomez and led by Valerie Cook, earned 11th place at Global's, and that's big. Team members include Jaden Atchell, Haley Cook, Cameron Cunningham, Haley, no, this is Haley Cook, Cameron Cunningham, Kristi Perez, Aislinn Felpin, Rowan Felpin. The combined team of Mary H. Matula and Milton M. Summers, the Dream Team, sponsored by Amanda Warner Hoffman, led by Lee Faulkner, earned ninth place at Global's. Team members include Leana Di Leonard, Gwendolyn Elliott, Karina Elliott, Jason Faulkner, Emma Mackey, Arton McKen, Arton McKazin, Natalie McCune. Okay, get comfortable. Each year, the Maryland State Advisory Council on Gifted and Talented Education recognizes outstanding gifted and talented students, educators, and community stakeholders. Five teachers, five content specialists, two directors, and 51 students were recognized on February 27th for their accomplishments in gifted education at the 2024 Celebrating Gifted and Talented Education in Maryland Awards Ceremony. Students were nominated by the Learning Resource Teachers at their schools. Student criteria, student criteria for recognition includes academic performance at a high level, being a current recipient of a school system, state, or national award, and participation in a gifted education program. Principals, please approach the steps to congratulate your students, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your child's names, and if you could, because there are 51 students, please hold your applause until the end, or we'll be here all night. Okay. From Barnhart Elementary School, Yatzel Amaya and Joshua Tyson. From Berry Elementary School, Charlotte Fenton, Aleah Pilera, Jason Chen, and Aiden Parkar. From Billingsley Elementary School, Caleb Yor. From Brown Elementary School, Idalia Estrada. From Craig Elementary School, Elsie Gipty and Logan Smith. From Gale Bailey Elementary School, Benjamin Burns. From William Diggs Elementary School, Cassidy Villanueva. From Indianhead Elementary School, Eva Clum. From Daniel of St. Thomas Jennifer Elementary School, Savannah Alberts, Chelsea Onawu, and Emma Shanbarger. From Malcolm Elementary School, Gabrielle Niklas. From Batula Elementary School, Madison Dunn, Jason Faulkner, Roman Gabala, Desmond Warner, and Olivia Wang. I like sibling support. From Middleton Elementary School, Ray Diara, Diara. From Mitchell Elementary School, Grant Chappell, Robert Lynn, Nora Moss, Haley Cook, and Tamlin Hopkins. From Neal Elementary School, John Jan Magway, Oduwad Darsimi, Odubena, I'm so sorry, and Kenzo Evans. From JC Parks Elementary School, Yaya Ziden. From Wade Elementary School, David Trout. From Davis Middle School, Colin Finley. From the Phoenix International School of the Arts, London Lulane. From Picklewaxen Middle School, Evelyn Bedell, Elise Jennings, Troy Peterson, Paul Blachek, Elijah Merkel, Charis Pilkerton, Kai Scott, Marcellus White. From Smallwood Middle School, Allegra Silva Jimenez. From Summers Middle School, Jackson Heiss, Ariella Myers, Micah Rizer, and Karina Elliott. From Benjamin Stoddart Middle School, Reese Carlin, Logan Boswell. Now you can applause.
Okay, good afternoon. Chairperson Moore Lee, Vice Chairperson Kramer, Board Members, Dr. Navarro, and esteemed guests. My name is Rebecca Brant, Director of Career and Technical Education. I'm here on behalf of Simone Young, Coordinator for STEM Education, to recognize students who have excelled in competitive STEM programs. These students are leaders in STEM innovation. The Maryland Mathematics, Engineering, and Science Achievement, or Mesa, program is an after-school program for students in grades three through 12 designed to build skillset and spark interest in pursuing STEM careers. Students experience engineering, computer programming, physics, and more while developing strong communication and collaboration skills through project-based team competitions. The challenges are centered around how students can help their community through technology. On Saturday, May 4th, 2024, the first-place winners of our Mesa Regional Competition represented Charles County at the state-level competition sponsored by the John Hopkins Applied Physics Laboratory in Laurel, Maryland. I am proud to share, our elementary teams won first place in every category at the state competition. With Berry Elementary School, Ms. Cloud, please join us with, to recognize the team. Okay, Berry Elementary School was awarded first place in the Community Cleanup Challenge. The team created an automated cleaning machine that works on both water and land to combat litter in their neighborhood. The contraption included a working conveyor belt to transfer litter directly to trash receptacles. School Coordinator, Abdeeb Parker, and Wes Turner, those are our community volunteers for this, can never do that without the volunteers. Team members, Charlotte Fenton, John Mateo, Keith Platter, and Jalen Shackelford. Malcolm Elementary was awarded first place in the Planetary Lander Challenge. The team built a lander to safely land with passengers on the surface of the moon. Judges called the team's design innovative and highly effective. Mr. Hangee is down there ready to, to meet them. School Coordinators, Bianca Valdez and Betty Lyon. Team members, Jack Jenkins, Gabrielle Niklas, Donald Parks, and Sebastian Webb. William Diggs Elementary students. They are being recognized for two first-place Mesa State Awards. The first award is first place for the Wearable Technology Challenge. The Wearable Technology Challenge is tasked students with creating a wearable device to accurately monitor respiration rates in infants and to alert caregivers when the respiration rates are too low or too high. The team created a device they named the Baby Saver. The Baby Saver used advanced design solutions such as a leaf switch and a sensor that detects when the baby breathes. The team also programmed a microprocessor to have LED change, LEDs change colors as respiration rates changed. All right, so Mr. Harrington, please join to congratulate the winners. As school coordinators, Tracy Davis and Michael Johnson. And they are coordinators for multiple teams, so they really are doing some amazing, amazing work. Team members, Colin Conception, Damari Dosier, Talani Johnson, and Mark Kattoom. The next recognition for Diggs Elementary is their first-place award in the Storybook Theme Park Competition. This challenge, in this challenge, teams are charged to create a working theme park ride that safely carries passengers. The ride must be based on a beloved piece of literature. The team created a ride called Space Invaders, based on the novel Mouse Tronaut by Mark Kelly. In the book, the main character, Mouse, dreams of going to space but is limited because of his size. The team explored how to fulfill Mouse's lifelong dream by designing a drop tower that simulates a space capsule returning from the International Space Station. from the International Space Station. So again, the school coordinators were Tracy Davis and Michael Johnson. Team members, Jackson Battle. Audrey Harris. Liam James. And Leah Rogue Sorto. Next, we will honor what our STEM Coordinator affectionately calls "The Little Sea Perch Team That Could." So we're moving on to Sea Perch now. Sea Perch is a program designed for secondary students to build and race remotely operated vehicles, or R O V S. There is construction, circuitry, and soldering required to build an operating underwater robot. It's similar to the rescue and recovery robots used by the military. Diggs Elementary School was the first elementary school team to be admitted to the International Sea Perch Competition. Yeah, that's a big deal. Diggs consistently dominates our regional competition, which includes middle and high school teams. Much of their awesome success is due to their diligent coaches. This team may be small, but they are mighty. In addition to all the accolades already mentioned, when the team competed at the International Sea Perch Competition held June 1st at the University of College Park, they were ranked number one in Maryland, number two in the DC metro area, and the third-best elementary team in the world. So their coaches, Tracy Davis, Mike Johnson, and Erica Bliss. Team members, Sebastian Manchego. Yaden Tamrat. And Dylan Washington. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrew Blumheart, and I'm an instructional specialist for Fine and Performing Arts. It is my honor to be here today to recognize our theater students and their teachers for their superior ratings at the Maryland State Thespian Festival earlier this year. High school students from Henry Lackey, La Plata, McDonough, North Point, St. Charles, Thomas Stone, and Westlake High Schools competed against students from 34 other high schools across the state of Maryland at the Maryland State Thespian Festival. The festival featured over 300 workshops led by industry leaders, more than 15 one-act performances, individual event competitions, college auditions, and scholarship awards. From La Plata High School, all right, now invite the principals to come forward, thank you. From La Plata High School, for solo musical theater, Kira Schaefer. From McDonough High School, for solo musical theater, Meritessa Oakley-Fetterman. Michaela Nairn. And Brett Wood. For costume design, Maya Sellers. From North Point High School, for solo musical theater, Ren Smith. For stage management, Addison Jordan. From St. Charles High School. For solo musical theater, Rakaria Lawson. And Corey Sobers, for solo acting. From the group musical theater from St. Charles High School, please hold your applause, a few names here. Zenaya Brown. Dominique Dixon. Kayden Stey. Angela Foster. Leila Franklin. Ashley Campos Gomez. Jayden Holly. Zion Kosch. Rakaria Lawson. Markus Marshall. Damon Parker. Elias Thompson. Kalen Williams. Brendan Ren. And Nia Young. We also had a very special teacher from St. Charles High School recognized as the Maryland Thespian Teacher of the Year, Mr. Benjamin Simpson. From Westlake High School, for solo musical theater, Zion Callaway. For duet musical theater, Joshua Pelzer and Kayla Pratt. This past year was the first time in our history that we've held an all-county musical theater musical. And this was sort of the brainchild of Mr. Benjamin Simpson, recognized just a moment ago. And it was the fruits of dozens of kids, probably 10 to 12 teachers. And they started practicing for this right about this time last year and worked all throughout the summer to put on an amazing production of a chorus line. The production of a chorus line was adjudicated and selected by the Maryland Thespian Festival, Maryland State Thespians, to be the mainstage show, which means the best. And they put on the first musical performance at the Thespian Festival in many years. So I'm gonna read off these students first. From Henry Lackey High School, Sidney Bridges. Danielle Amarante. Ryan Gimel. Ayla Huntley. Penny Crybell. And Emily Matunden. From La Plata High School, Claire Mitchell, Nathan Pankowski, Tyler Raymer, and Kira Schaefer. From McDonough High School, Alani Andrews, Leila Dodson. Leila Holloway. Michaela Nairn. Maya Sellers. Olivia Snyder. Lena Williams. Brett Wood. And William Zabriskie. From North Point High School, Allison Bowser, Lindsay Bush. Arzel Catano. Jalen Conward. Kennedy Ganey. Jordan Harmon. Trinity Hill. Demetrius Hunter. Mia Johnson. Addison Jordan. David Morris. And Ren Smith. From St. Charles High School, Leila Franklin, Taylor Hill, Rakaria Lawson. Markus Marshall. Charlize Thomas. Kalen Williams. Cameron Williams. And Jalea Williams. From Thomas Stone High School, Jillian Daniel and Dayana Moore. From Westlake High School, Zion Callaway, Joshua Pelzer, Kayla Pratt, and Nari Whitfield. We have such an amazing and successful theater program in Charles County Public Schools because of students like them. You can see how many students go into a production of that scale. But the students and the state of our theater programs would not be anywhere without the support of our incredible teachers. So I'm gonna read off the names of the teachers that worked on the musical. If you could please stand and be recognized. We have Amanda Hastings from Lackey High School. From La Plata High School, Stephanie Joya, Jennifer Joyner, and Julia Rivenberg. From McDonough High School, Jana Heil. From North Point High School, Kristen Helming and Tessa Celestro. From St. Charles High School, Tim LaBelle, Brian Kuhn, and Ben Simpson. From Thomas Stone High School, Sarah Thompson. And from Westlake High School, Brian Grossbach, Jackson Long, and Mark Pavlicek.
Good afternoon. My name is Rich Powley. I'm the Director of Student Activities, Athletics, and Aquatics. And I am here to present our spring individual and team state champions. Becoming a state champion is a challenging goal that requires dedication, hard work, and perseverance. It is the culmination of all of these athletes' hard work coming... Excuse me. It is the culmination of all of these athletes' hard work coming to fruition. It is my pleasure to present the following student athletes and teams to you as the state champions from Charles County Public Schools. First up, we have from Lackey High School, Athletic Director John Lush. Track and field in the 2A state classification. The head coach, Jamari Jones. Assistant coaches Sherwin Hawkins, Jacob Likens, Robert Burnett, and Kyosha King. The individual state champs are first in the men's triple jump, Ronald Johnson. And in the men's shot put, Devin McNair. Next, from North Point, and if the principal and athletic director, Andy Shattuck, would join us at the stairs. The track and field 4A team. Head coached by Ms. Debbie Hall. Assistant coaches Zoe Bond, Sandra Fair, Charlie Poole, Lionel Ball, and Madison Neal. The individual state champions from North Point High School in the men's 200-meter dash are Corinne Corbin. And in men's discus, the state champion, Steven Neal. Next up, we have Westlake High School. Again, the two... Westlake High School was the 2A state champions in the men's division. The athletic director is Mr. Andrew Dutrow. The coaches are head coach Adano Murray. Assistant coaches Najia Haskins and Demetrius Sims. The men's 2A state championship team, and you will hear a name more than once because the first names you'll hear are those are the members of the team. And then you'll hear those who have won a second or third state title even. First, we have Kelechi Anyanwu. Abubey Emichibe. James Francis. Darnell Gerard Jennifer. Noah Hospidales. Juan Manuel Mondragon Montezuma. David Nabuko. Caleb Phillips. Nasir Shakur. Kendall Thompson. Christian Wilbon. The state champions in the men's 4x100-meter relay. Abubey Emichibe. David Nabuko. Kendall Tyson. Christian Wilbon. Next, we have the state champions in the men's 4x200-meter relay. And now you understand why they won the team title. Kelechi Anyanwu. Abubey Emichibe. David Nabuko. And Christian Wilbon. Now presenting the state champions in the men's 4x400-meter relay. Kelechi Anyanwu. James Francis. Darnell Gerard Jennifer. Juan Manuel Mondragon Montezuma. And last but not least, the individual state champion in the women's triple jump, Amara Parish. Well done, Westlake High School. Next, we have La Plata High School in track and field, the 2A division. Our principals and athletic director, Chris Butler, would join us at the stairs. Our head coaches, Mr. Devonte Williams, assistant coaches Kayla Truesdale, Jason Walton, and Mike Sterman. The individual state champs, this is a two-time state champ in the women's long jump and the 100-meter dash, Ms. Brianna Smith. State champ in the men's long jump, Jacob Tidwell. And state champ in the men's discus, Mr. Willie Washington. We are gonna stay with La Plata High School. I present to you the Unified Track and Field State Champions. Coaches Earl Swan, Stephanie Berry, and Jeffrey Thomas. Team members are William Alcorn. Margaret Allen. Dana Beasley. Aiden Drum. Jake Flint. Macy Flint. Edward Holt. Faith Johnson. Maximus Mizer. Emily Nelson. Martin Jude Smith. Aiden Sullivan. Daphne Teagarden. Zaria Toy. Aiden Walters. And Grant Winkler. I believe Coach Swan, that is their eighth state championship in a row. Last but certainly not least, we have McDonough High School, also in the sport of unified track and field. They were the state champions. The principal will join us there along with the athletic director, Ms. Pamela Thornton-Miller. The coaches are Anna Scarfali. Jalen Houchent. Coach Wooden. And Carrie Mona. Team members include Zakar Adams. Malachi Faxin. Ryan Hovey. Jamal Jones. Rashad King. Zachary McChesney. Bryce Nelson. Julie Perrello. Gavin Richardson. Sebastian Romero. Avon Rolich. Ethan Shettle. Ruby Thiessen. Destiny Tucker. Idalia Turnbull. Drew Turner. Jamison Wesley. And Patrick Wilson. Thank you, and congratulations.
Well, congratulations again to all of our winners. That was outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Let us see. The time is now 5:23. If you could please take us off the air until 6:00 PM? Thank you. We're on recess. Welcome back, everyone, to our millions watching. Thank you. Just confirming, Mr. Schwartz, we do not have anyone sign up for public forum. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on.
Okay, moving on, we have the end-of-the-year district data update and strategic plan presented by Mr. Kevin Louse.
Hi, Mr. Louse.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Great to be here today. Great to present some student achievement data.
Yes.
And it's especially apropos to do it the same day that we celebrated so many state champions.
Absolutely.
But it's great to see so many of our students achieving at the highest levels. So today, we're here to talk about... First of all, good evening Chairperson Moore Lee.
Good evening.
My Chairperson Kramer, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Navarro. I'm here today to talk about our strategic plan, Priority One, student learning and achievement, and our goal of looking at the I-Ready scores. This evening, we're going to take some time with Mr. Roberts, Director of Office of Shared Accountability, talking about and taking us through the I-Ready data and sharing where we were, both as a cohort, which will show last spring to this spring, but also will look at our students for the individual classes as to how they started the year and then how they ended the year. So it's very important to look at it in both ways because we have to be moving forward when we look at the cohort, but we also have to be looking at the students and how well they're doing during the school year. So Mr. Roberts will take the time and do that. But the most important thing we're here about today really is not the data, but to talk to you about and share with you what we've done this year to improve our student data, and then what we're planning on next year to continue improving in the areas to help our students achieve at a high level. So we have with us today Christine Bryce, who is the Content Specialist for Elementary Math. Melissa Mizowitz, who's the Director for Secondary Curriculum. And Megan Hungerford, who is the Director for Elementary Curriculum. So they will share with you at the point in time where we go over what we're doing. They'll be coming up individually and sharing what we're doing as a district to help our students achieve once again this year and what we plan on doing next year to improve our data. So at this time, I'm going to call up Mr. Roberts and have him start off by sharing the I-Ready and how well we've done.
Thank you, Mr. Louse. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so to start off, I wanted to talk a little bit about the windows and all books. So we are testing at three different levels. We start with our elementary level, middle school level, and our high school level. At the elementary, we assess grades one through five in reading and math. In middle school, we have grades six through eight in reading and math. But at the eighth... For the eighth grade, we do not use the spring testing for I-Ready because of the number of minutes. We, as the assessment committee, determined that the number of minutes that were required for the four state tests cut into the amount of time that we had available. So we weren't... We're not able to test the eighth grade for reading and math in the spring. And for high school, we are testing grade nine in English. And you'll see from the charts the change that we made over the two years for that. And we test students who are enrolled in Foundations of Algebra and Algebra I for high school. They're tested three times a year. They use their computer labs or the device, their school-issued devices. And teachers had the flexibility of when they wanted to administer it during the given windows. As I said, there's three different windows. There's the fall/winter and spring windows. So those are administered three different times throughout the year. So I'm going to start with the mathematics data. So just to understand how the mathematics data, or any of the data in I-Ready is set up, we use five different colors. Essentially, the dark red shows three grade levels below. The lighter red or the pink is two grade levels below. The yellow, which is one grade level below. The green, which is where we want to get our students, which is the lighter green, the earlier one grade level, and then the dark green, which is the mid or above grade level. So our goal is to get all of our students in that green area. So the first one that we're going to show here is how the relative placements have changed from spring to spring for three different years. So on the far right will be where we finished this year in spring, and then the far left is where we were in spring from the 21-22 school year. At the bottom, we have the number of students that were assessed in each of the different years. So as you can see from where we started in 21-22, first thing we typically look at from Office of Teach and Learn is where are we in the green? So in that 21-22 school year, we had 29% of our students in that green. This year, we're at that 35% of students in the green. So we've grown from 21-22 to where we are in 23-24. We made some growth from where we were last year. The other thing that we really want to look at closely is where we are in the pink and the red. So we want to decrease those numbers of students that are in the pink and the red. So in 21-22, we were at 35%. Now we're at 30%. So we want to decrease the reds and increase the greens. So we've made some growth from 21-22 to 22-23 and 23-24. So again, this is just the math data. We'll go over the same thing with the reading data. So then we look more closely at each of the different grade levels. So if you look at first and second grade, you'll notice that there is no dark red because we're looking at for first and second grade, the dark red is three grade levels or below. So using the grade levels that they are, you can't see three grade levels below during first or second grade. So you won't see that start to appear until third grade. But as you can see, again, we're looking at those greens, and we're looking at those reds, increasing those greens and decreasing those reds. So across, you'll see the trend that we are increasing the green each year. You can see a slight drop there in third grade, but as we go from first grade, second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, each time, we're seeing that increase in the green, and we're seeing that decrease in the red. A lot of times, what we see, and I haven't really talked a lot about that yellow, is that one grade level below, is we see students that move from the red into the yellow, but then we'll see the same number of students move from the yellow into that green area. So that's where we really focus a lot on where we are with that, with the greens. So then moving on to sixth and seventh grade. We have made some gains since the 21-22 school year, but you can see we have a slight drop in the greens for sixth and seventh grade. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we did not test eighth graders in the spring, so we don't have eighth graders to measure where the results were. But we are using eighth grade data for the spring and the winter, so we can have different data points throughout. We're just not using it in the spring. And then here in the ninth grade one, you can see it's, for the most part, it's ninth graders, but really, it's high school. It's all of high school, anybody that's enrolled in algebra. So those numbers, you'll see a difference in the way we did the reading over the couple of years. Okay, so now, what we also like to do is we like to compare to see where we are as a district, where Charles County Public Schools is, comparisons in Maryland year-to-date and national year-to-date. So the bars on the left-hand side in each of these categories is where nationally, the year-to-date norm... Not norms, where the national year-to-date, which is roughly 1.1 million students across the nation taking I-Ready, and then Maryland year-to-date for the spring placement, roughly 21,000, right around that 20,000 mark, and then where we are for each of our groups. So we like to see where we are in terms of the reds and where we are in terms of the greens. So here's first and second grade for mathematics. You can see it's fairly consistent here. And then third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Again, we have some work to do here. We need to... We want to get to where nationally those numbers are. You can see that we have slight differences in where we are in the green, where we are in the reds for each of these grade levels. And then sixth and seventh grade, again. Very similar for Maryland, but you can see the difference where the national year-to-date numbers are. So what we really want to see is, we want to see where our students are going, what kind of growth work they're making. I-Ready has two different types of growth. They have a typical growth, which is based on where the student tests in the fall, their first assessment, where they score in that particular first assessment, and where other students have scored nationally, they have a typical growth. If they've reached typical growth, they are growing at the same rate as what other students who have tested at the same placement levels. What we really want to look for is that stretch growth, which is that big jump so that we can close those gaps, so those students that are a grade level below, two or three grade levels below, can make that stretch growth for years in a row, so that they're closing that gap and making that stretch growth. Make those gaps go down. So in this one, what we did was we created this internally, using the data that they've given us from I-Ready. This is the percentage of students. What we did was we took a look at all the students who started in the fall in each of these grade levels, one through seven, where they were in the fall, and students who were in the pink, red, or yellow area, what percentage of them... The lighter blue here is the percent that met 100% of their typical growth, and the dark blue is the students who met their stretch growth. Our goal is to get to that stretch growth. Kevin wants to jump in here.
So the one thing that I just wanted to point out for this one, and so this is a new measurement for us. We didn't have this last year, but our Office of Shared Accountability put it together for us. Because what we noticed was what I-Ready was giving us, they were giving us the median score. And the median score was very skewed. And so what we were looking at, we were looking at the median. We saw our students were over 100% of meeting their typical growth, and that we were a much higher percent of our students meeting their stretch growth. But what we noticed was that our students, when we looked at the number of students who was meeting our typical and our stretch growth, didn't necessarily match that median. So I just want to share with the board, you didn't see this last year, but you are seeing this year, this actually helps us because for a student that's just making typical growth, and that's what a student will make from when they enter their grade level to when they leave their grade level, it does not catch them up. A student, if we're going to catch them up, and you'll see that many of our students are one or two grade levels behind, we have to make up more than one year. So we are looking at the stretch growth. And one of the things that we're working with our schools on is, let's look at the stretch growth. That should be your goal for the year, not the typical growth. Because otherwise, we'll never get all our kids caught up there.
So using this same idea, we wanted you to be able to see the growth that our students have made from the fall to the spring in each of our different grade levels. So this is the district as a whole. You could see where we started the school year in terms of the green and where we ended the school year in the green. So this was just this year's students, this year where they were. So to be included in this number, they had to test in both the fall and the spring assessments. So by grade level, you can see, again, the dramatic increase in where they were in the green, where they started in the green, where they ended in the green, and where we were in the red. We definitely made some major growth for each of these grade levels. But again, our measurement is, let's get to that stretch growth. Make that gap close. Year after year, we need students to meet that stretch growth. So that's our target. So then similarly, middle school and then the high school numbers. And we've also included subgroup data. This is spring placement for subgroup data. And this is all students who tested. And then we did additional subgroups. You'll see some changes in the language. You'll see multilingual learners, where the data has moved from English language learners to multilingual learners. So some of the places, you'll see where it's English language learners. As we transition into next year, you'll see mostly multilingual learners of the languages that will be used. And then similarly, with the economically disadvantaged, you can see the change. And then spring placement here for special education students. I'm going to bring up Christina Bryce. She's going to talk through elementary math. As Kevin said, we really want to look at the data. We want to see what we're doing, how we got there, and where we're headed.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we have focused on system-wide this school year and what we're going to continue to focus on this next school year. So our goal, starting out at the beginning of this school year, was our curriculum with fidelity and integrity, meaning that we wanted to make sure we were matching the rigor of our standards, and we were teaching all grade-level standards during the course of the year. In order to accomplish that, we highly monitored pacing at our students. So we did that through our common assessment plan. We did that through our math coaches checking in with teams and teachers on a monthly basis. Sometimes that resulted in individual teams or teachers getting a little off pace, and we were able to monitor it to intervene and help teachers and teams catch back up. We also engaged in regular learning walks, meaning that we went through and really monitored what does math instruction look like in our elementary classrooms. Additionally, we're offering professional learning for our school-based administrators. This summer, we're pulling them for two days to talk about some of the problems of practice in supporting an elementary mathematics program. We're delivering a lot of professional learning for our teachers. Our content courses in math are four-day professional learning sessions called O-GAP, which stands for Ongoing Assessment Project. We offer those this year on Saturdays for our teachers to take. We're offering them at the end of June, and we offer them in July. Charles County has the largest number of trained O-GAP facilitators statewide, and MSDV is using this as their professional learning in mathematics as well. So we have a lot of opportunity because we jumped on that train earlier, and we already have a very systematic cycle of those sessions being implemented in our district. We've invested a lot in our school-based math coaches, also known as our IRTs, who are providing job-embedded professional learning for novice teachers, experienced teachers, teams of teachers. We've invested a lot of professional learning time with them to develop them into instructional coaches with lots of tools to support adult learning that impacts student achievement. Additionally, we are using data with our school teams to make sure that we're implementing high-quality, standard-based, and engaging lessons. And we've worked really hard to include intervention time within the elementary school day and making sure that our classroom teachers are implementing Tier Two and Tier Three interventions as needed so that every student is getting what they need. Our instructional initiatives are really about focusing on that 30 minutes a day that we have built into the school day. So we're really making sure we're providing the capacity, including the time and the resources and the professional learning, for our teachers to do both grade-level instruction and intervention if needed. We are looking at student work, so that was part of our PLT work this year, system-wide, and we're developing protocols for being able to analyze student work so that we're not missing any students, and we're targeting our instruction to match needs. As we focused on writing as a district, we capitalized on a piece of that, what does writing look like in mathematics? Because it's a little bit different, but a little bit the same as it looks in literacy. We focused on math language routines to support reasoning during our lessons. We supported schools that were using both the traditional scheduling model and departmentalization. And beginning next year, we will be using MyPath. Like we have been in reading, we'll be using it for math as well. And we'll go system-wide with that. We piloted it this year in some of our schools, and we'll go system-wide with that next year. So next up, off that secondary math, Melissa Mizowitz.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So in secondary land, it's going to sound a lot like what we do in elementary school because best practice is best practice. And so for professional learning, our professional learning for our teachers focused on fidelity and integrity and reaching the content standards. So really working with teachers to ensure that they understand the standard completely and that they're able to plan for instruction from beginning to end. In-service and professional learning opportunities are offered in the summer, in evenings, and during our in-service days throughout the school year. Some of them are mandatory, they're required, and then, of course, there's deeper professional learning opportunities that are optional for teachers to participate in if they choose. We also, in middle school and high school, have common assessments that are aligned directly to the MSDV standards. We really took a look at the data this year from those common assessments to see where our teachers were as far as pacing was concerned, to ensure that teachers were able to get through the content and the curriculum before the state assessment or the end-of-year exam. We really worked with teachers and school leaders in assessing and analyzing, or I'm sorry, analyzing that assessment data to ensure that their teachers... sorry, analyzing that assessment data to ensure that their teachers really are getting to the root of those standards and are able to go deeply, but also that they're staying on pace with instruction. We offered support for teachers and specific administrators, if they needed that, to really help them understand fully what those content standards are. We also have meeting time set aside with school-based administrators, our content specialists are frequently meeting with administrators to really help them understand and build their own capacity in the area of math. Not everybody was a math teacher, and so it's important that we build the capacity of our leaders so that they're able to then best support teachers moving forward. We conducted plenty of classroom visits, and those look different depending on the purpose and depending on the time of the year. Sometimes they're with teams of resource teachers and administrators, the content specialists, and sometimes it's just one or two people, a content specialist and a resource teacher may be going through some classrooms. But with that data, that classroom visit data, they're then able to meet with teachers if there are any concerns, or just provide that extra support and assistance to teachers to reflect on their practice and their progress, and really determine what the next steps are instructionally. We provided professional learning specifically for resource teachers, middle school resource teachers, in the development of like going very deep in content knowledge, looking at mathematical progressions, and addressing student misconceptions. And as mentioned in elementary, middle school is jumping on that O-GAP bandwagon, so ongoing assessment project. MSDV is providing a lot of support with that, and we have a number of resource teachers and content specialists who are going to take part in that training. So hopefully, we can get to the point where elementary has been for a few years now. Instructional initiatives, we really restructured that small group and differentiated instructional time. So as you know, we've mentioned this before, but we're now fully invested in those lab classes at the middle school level. So we've really uncoupled core instruction from the intervention or the enrichment opportunities for students, and those are called lab classes. So in middle school, we have different levels of labs. In high school, we have what we call foundations of algebra in the ninth grade, and we actually just restructured that foundations course to be more like an intervention and provide a lot more support to students who are in ninth grade struggling in Algebra I. And so we hope to see good results from that. There is obviously a system-wide looking at student work protocol that we have implemented, and we work with teams at the school level to identify student strengths and needs, determine student misconceptions, and identify those next steps for instruction. And this is something that good teachers have always been doing, right? Teachers always look at student work and identify where they need to go next. But doing it as a group of teachers, or a team specifically that works together at a school, really allows teachers to go a lot deeper and identify things that maybe they wouldn't have seen just by themselves. We use formative assessment to monitor student progress and then adjust instruction accordingly. There is a focus this year, and moving forward, on reasoning and modeling through writing to promote deep conceptual understanding and opportunities to process learning. So you've heard about our focus on writing standard two. So what does that look like in math, and how do we really support students? Embedding math language routines and standards of mathematical practice to support reasoning and modeling. We are continuing to use MyPath, we've been using MyPath to support our intervention classes for the past few years. We're going to continue with the use of MyPath as we have seen tremendous growth. And then at the high school level, we use iXL to build those foundational skills. iXL has a diagnostic assessment built in, so then teachers are really able to see where students' needs are and address those needs moving forward. And since we've restructured that foundations of algebra course, that will really give them the time to be able to do that in addition to delivering core instruction.
All right, we're going to move into reading. I think you'll see a noticeable difference in the reading progress that we've made. So we're excited about that. So if you take a look here, this is the first group, this is the slides that show from spring to spring, from 21, 22 to 23, 24, you'll see that those numbers on the right, that's 23, 24, we've made a jump from the dark green, 24% to 26%, and we've made some strides in terms of the yellow and the red here. So we're definitely making movement, which is where we want to see. So then grade levels, across, you can see in each of these different grade levels, the green that is present in first grade, the green in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, across all grade levels, we're seeing increase in our green, which is exactly what we want to see. And then sixth and seventh grade, again, looking at that dark green, 23% versus the 21%, you can see where we were from 21, 22. So gone from 18 to 23%, big jump there for our sixth graders. We're not seeing that same increase in the seventh grade, and again, eighth grade, as a reminder, we did not test in the spring for them. And this is where I was mentioning earlier, that ninth grade, in ninth grade, in the 21, 22 school year, we only tested ninth graders who were in the A-level courses, not in the honors courses. We moved to 22, 23, and 23, 24 to test all of our ninth graders in all three different assessments, all three different windows. So you can see the numbers at the bottom that have significantly jumped, of the numbers that we tested in each of those groups. But again, we're seeing that growth in that green and that decrease in the red. So then this is the benchmark data, where we compare national year-to-date numbers to Maryland year-to-date numbers and CCBES. This is first and second grade. Again, reminder that don't have a dark red in these two grade levels. When we go to third, fourth, and fifth, much more consistent from where we are compared to Maryland for these grade levels at reading than we were in mathematics. And then sixth and seventh grade, seeing this similar trend there. And then again, data that we looked at internally, looking at that percentage of annual growth, what percentage of our students met that typical growth, and what percentage of our students met that annual stretch growth. See that fourth grade, 57.5, and then the 29.25. So then, we wanted to look at where our kids were in the fall, where they ended up in the spring. This is overall change, all the students that tested in both windows. And then moving along to each of the different grade levels, first, second, third, and fourth, and fifth together here, the growth from fall to spring, and then in middle school and high school. Definitely seeing more growth at the elementary levels than we are in secondary. Then we did the same thing with the subgroups. Broken down with all that bilingual learners, those who are and who are not, economically disadvantaged, and the last one will be special education. I'm going to bring up Megan Hungerford to talk about elementary reading.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start with, first of all, you're going to see that there are a lot of parallels between what we're doing in the math area and what we're doing in the reading. This is intentional because as Melissa Mizowitz said, best practice is our best practice. But we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we are dealing with the exact same teachers we're implementing things with in math as we are in reading, so we wanted to think as streamlined as possible for our staff. So the first thing is, and I know you've heard about this a lot, but we continue with a robust program of professional learning on the science of reading. So this year, we were able to, I don't have the exact percentage, but it's over 95% of our pre-patriot pre-teachers have been trained in letters. We're embarking this year on letters training for administrators, so that they have a good idea of how to lead and support their elementary reading program. And then we're going to have additional sessions on teaching foundational skills, structured literacy, and phonics, which I'll talk about in a minute. I didn't put in this slide, but I want to let you guys know that we also, as a system, are supporting the training of 10 of our reading resource teachers to become letters trainers, somewhat like we did with our O-GAP trainers. So Charles County is kind of leading the charge in many ways, in that we're going to be able to keep this initiative going and to sustain it internally instead of relying on outside vendors, so that when we have new teachers to those grade levels, we won't have gaps in the training and learning. And we can do that within our system, with our people, and have a little more flexibility and a lot more savings on it. Reading and our content specialist, Kim Hudler, have done intentional, and our reading coaches have done intentional learning walks to observe the Tier One program, offer feedback, offer support, offer coaching, and ensure that our program is being implemented to the best of our teachers' abilities and our students' access. We do use an evidence-based cycle of coaching. It's the art of coaching that our reading resource teachers have been trained on, and it really helps to build the capacity of our classroom teachers in all facets of reading instruction. You've heard a lot about our system-wide initiative with writing standard two, but we're focusing within and beyond the English Language Arts for Reading and Literacy content area, because practicing those activities of reading and writing in all content areas really helps to enhance the instruction across the board. And we continue to unwrap and deeply study the standards to be sure that we understand the rigor of what the students are being asked, and to meet that with increasingly complex text. So I talked just a few minutes ago about structured literacy. We really found that just the components of what we were actually doing with foundational skills in the large group reading was not meeting the needs of what we wanted. And we found a program, Structured Literacy, which is part of our Tier One Core Program into reading, that really helps teachers structure and focus how they teach phonics and phonemic awareness with more student success. We piloted this in a number of schools last year, and when we analyzed the data compared to the schools that didn't pilot it, we saw really much more impressive results. So therefore, we're implementing that, we're going to provide professional learning, and you're going to see that in all of our primary classrooms next year. It will fit right within the regular reading block, it will just be a much more structured, cohesive way to teach those foundational skills. And as you can see, it merges right with the materials. We already have the Start Right decodable text, and it really guides teachers in how they teach those skills. We do a lot of analysis of student work, as has been mentioned. We do that with teams of teachers, and we look deeply at what students are doing well, and what our next steps of instruction are, and we use that to guide our small group instruction, our whole group instruction, and intervention as needed. We do continue to provide evidence-based interventions to those students in need, and we do that through small group time, we do that in extended learning, we do that as needed with pull-out or push-in. We have reading interventionists in every elementary school, as well as classroom interventionists. When we can staff those positions, sometimes we don't have to quit staffing them in small numbers. And those people are well-trained in how to do that, and how to make those interventions successful, and how to progress monitor, so that they can pivot as needed. I think that's about it that we've talked about, but we feel like we are going very strongly in the right direction with reading, but we need to make sure that we meet every student's needs, and we'll continue the strategy. And with that, I will turn it over to Melissa Mizowitz.
Okay, so on to secondary reading. So we have this past year and moving forward, planning to offer professional learning for teachers focused on data collection and analysis, so looking at trends, student strengths, and then areas of improvement to really support the instruction, the instructional focus. We have targeted support programs at both the middle and the high school levels, and similarly to math, those are called lab classes at the middle school level, and then at the high school level, they're called supplemental reading and literacy. So they are specific designated times set aside for students who need intervention. We offer specialized training for those intervention teachers, and also for the reading interventionists at the middle school level. And again, they're targeting and really focusing in on foundational skill building and prerequisite information that students need in order to be successful in the core content area. And then with our system-wide initiative to enhance writing standard two, and reading and writing within and beyond the English Language Arts content area, our English and our ELA teachers at the middle school level have really become experts in the building, and our content specialists are working with teachers and teams of teachers to help them see what that looks like for their own specific content area, so across the board. For instructional initiatives, specifically at the high school level, but also at the middle school level to some extent, the content specialists have really been working with teachers on how to implement flexible grouping. I feel like once you get into secondary, middle, and high school, it's a lot more stand and deliver, and not as much targeted instruction for small groups. So they're really working with teachers on how to flexibly group students depending on the needs of the students and where they are instructionally, and focus in on specific needs, specifically what they need. We're integrating formative assessments to monitor student progress and adjust instruction accordingly, so constantly looking at student data, whether that's a quick exit ticket or a check-in with students to see where they are, and then helping teachers see how they can make adjustments within their regular lesson plan based on that data. The use of data to increase student ownership of learning through student-created and monitored learning goals. So specifically at the secondary level, we really want students to take ownership of where they are and where they want to go. So whether that's looking at their iReady data and setting goals based on that, or their data within their intervention, if they're in a specific reading intervention, and then working towards and celebrating when students do accomplish those goals. We have selected curriculum with really high-quality instructional materials focused and deeply aligned to the standards. We have a purposeful integration of reading and writing and lesson activities to reinforce comprehension and critical thinking skills. And then there's that system-wide writing standard two initiative, again, reading and writing within and beyond the English Language Arts classroom. So really looking at how we are assessing students in writing, regardless of the content area that they are in.
Before we go on to graduation rates, I think we'll take some questions with iReady, but I do want to highlight a few areas. So first of all, the eighth grade So, first of all, the eighth grade iReady score, you did, you will notice that we did not have spring assessments for iReady for the eighth grade because of the time limits that we have for school-wide, system-wide testing mandated by the state. And if we gave the iReady testing in the eighth grade this spring, we actually would have gone over the time limits that the state allows because they have the state testing that takes place in the spring, which took up quite a bit of time. So, that's why you don't see the eighth grade. The other thing I want to talk a little bit about high school. So, we've had some extensive talks with the iReady folks, and what they're saying about the scores at the high school level is it's great to use them for students that have reading or math goals because it'll show growth within the school year, which you're looking for when you have an IEP and you have a math or a reading goal. But when, for typical students that's in the ninth grade or in high school, I should say, they really don't have national norms, and they don't have a comparison as to whether the iReady test really measures what they say it does measure because what they've normalized it to is the eighth grade. And so, next year, because of the amount of state testing and everything that's going on, we will be offering the iReady scores only for students that have a reading and a math goal on their IEP to measure the growth and see how well the students have done during the school year in moving in those areas of that five grade goal. So, I just, I want to, you know, give you a little heads up right now that those are two changes that we're going to see. So, the other thing that I want to talk a little bit about, and I hope you've heard today, is what we look at is we look at three areas to try to improve the reading and the math. We look at how do we build our teacher capacity, professional learning, and I think you heard quite a bit about the professional learning. The other thing is, is how do we look at the school day, structure the school day in a way that we're able to support our students and provide really great first instruction. So, you talked, you heard today about the standards and the focus in on standards and improving the teaching going on in the schools and making sure it's at the state standard level that we're hitting all those instructional levels and teaching our students. The other thing is to help the students that's falling behind, what you also heard today was intervention and help and support. The one thing you didn't really hear today because it's in another presentation that we offered was the extended learning opportunities. We really see that as part of helping our students catch up. How can we extend the day? Because to really make a student be able to help and support them so that they meet their stretch goal, they need more time than a typical school year because the regular growth is a student that's in a typical school year. So, we all have to think about how can we support, help our students above and beyond if they're one or two grade levels behind. And the one thing that we have to do is we really have to partner with our families to help support our students both back here in the school and in the extended learning opportunities, but also provide opportunities with our parents and support with them and help our parents be able to provide the support for their, their students at home. So, we're looking at with professional learning, what can we offer our families to be able to help and support their students? I will say with the, with the summer boost this summer, we did have and offered eighty-five seats for every one of our elementary schools, and it was more difficult to fill those seats this year than it was in the past. And I think, you know, some of it is, is just fatigue, I think. I think our, our parents and our students are, they're hearing they got to do more, they got to do more, and we need more time, and it's getting more and more difficult, honestly, to get our students to, to attend the extended learning opportunities and to attend our summer school opportunities. So, I would like to say something to our families, like, you know, we have these great opportunities. We want to work with you. We'd love to have your students. In order to help us get your students caught up, we would love them to, to all attend our extended learning opportunities. But at this time, I'll take any questions for the iReady scores and what we're doing to help us improve. And it's through Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Board member Brenda Thomas is joining us virtually. I'll start with her as I make sure we don't forget her. Do you have any questions, Brenda?
So, you have information, but right now, I do not have any questions.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Butler-Washington, and I think Ms. Smith, is your hand up as well? Yes, okay.
After Ms. Butler-Washington. Thank you, Mr. Lowndes and team. This was great information. I think a lot of information kind of answered some of the questions I had. So, it looked like it appears that the MCAP and iReady get a lot, and it told us that our kids are not on reading and math and English stats. And so, that alone, it's a kind of alarm, but it's not kind, it is. Because the drop in all levels, as I looked at the slide, we did some gain somewhere, but majority it increased from the last school year. So, I'm not going to go down the list of what we didn't do wrong. What I do want to go is to go to what, some things that I think that Dr. Navarro and her team could look at. The number one, you already touched on, the parent department. That, to me, is key because without the parents, we cannot ensure that their children can be on reading. We need their full participation. And I say full participation is we end it all, we all, it needs to be one thing, to make sure that every child succeeds. And by having every child succeed, it should be success for the parent and the school. So, I echo you on that, that making sure that, you know, we have these programs, just please encourage your student or, you know, meet with another parent whose student is going and make a connection there if you cannot make it meet, but just making sure that we take, we take advantage of some of these things. And I want to touch on one more thing, is the peer. The peer tutoring, I tell you, is the best tutor. I'm going to take you back to when I was in school. The teacher, she said, she did everything right. Everybody got it. God, I didn't get it. But my neighbor, who was in the same school, was out there. She came, my mother went over and said, hey, how's your daughter doing? Oh, she's doing great. She got A's. Well, can they meet together and she can show her what she's teaching. I understood how she did it. I couldn't get it with the teacher there. So, it was a double-edged sword, which meaning that the students that are exceeding, excelling, let's utilize them. And we could tell them, you know, things like, if you do this, we can give you some community service hours in order to help our, to help the other students come up the park because community hours are required to finish high school. So, that's an incentive to get them involved and make sure that they want to do something. Or you can recognize them in other, you know, in other ways. But I think peer would help us a lot because students learn from students. We always say, you know, we have all these tutoring mechanisms in place, they're not getting it or they're not using it. But a student to student, they get it. So, I want to, you know, maybe put that back in play because when I was going to school, that was in play, and a lot of students got it. So, that could help us in raising our, our scores and everything. And just making sure that when we are, the after-school programs that we're using, making sure that those programs are geared to tutoring. I know that, you know, we partner with some that, you know, do other stuff, but tutoring is what we need right now. So, those funds should be used in tutoring our students and making sure that they succeed. So, just wanted to make sure, I, I didn't want to touch on every slide because we already know what we know, but I wanted to also offer some solutions, which we can use one because the way we used to do it, sometimes not effective because when you did things in the olden days, it doesn't mean you have to change. If it was working, let's keep doing it. So, you know, that's what I wanted to add to. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Lowndes, thank you and the team for the presentation. Appreciate the way in which the data was laid out. I think it's very helpful for our parents to be able to see the data broken down in this fashion. My question is, in fact, in relation to parents. Many of us on this board are parents and have students in school, and I'm curious, of course, that first day of school, when kids were turned back into the building, and parents are sort of looking to get acclimated and trying to figure out what may their child experience differently, given these iReady scores. I'll be candid, I am quite concerned about the level of scores and where they are. Definitely appreciate all the initiatives and strategies we're putting in place, and I understand that these are not year-long strategies. These are strategies that will take potentially two, three years for us to realize and see some true, deep change, even though the numbers are ahead of the right trajectory. So, my first question really is, how will principals, specifically principals and their admin teams, be working to educate parents on what their kids will see differently next school year, given the new interventions or strategies that we're trying to offer because of these iReady scores?
The one thing I wanted to say is that Dr. Jones and I and our groups, our executive directors and our directors are working very closely together on this. They have actually, when we talked about going out visiting schools, the executive directors are going with the directors and with the instructional specialists within the schools and joining the administrators. So, I just want to say that one thing that we're doing is strengthening the relationships between central office and making sure that we're all working with a common goal and a common mission of helping all students achieve. But I'm going to let Christina Grace talk a little bit about the elementary and what they have planned, working with the principals, because like we said, we have a training coming up to make sure that they understand the reading, but also the math.
So, for two days in July, elementary principals and assistant principals are going to come together. We're really talking about trends in our data and what does your school program need to look like to support every student's success. So, part of that is about teaching principals, like here's how you inspect what we expect. Here's the feedback you're going to give. Here's how that feedback process works so that teachers are learning and growing and students are learning and growing. We're also going to be talking about things like instructional methods. So, in mathematics, we're very aware of our time allotments for mathematics, and we want to make sure, given our math data, that we are capitalizing on every single minute we have allotted for elementary math instruction and that we're utilizing it wisely. So, we're really taking a look at our master schedule.
And you can see what your child is going to be learning in the upcoming units, down in some cases to the specificity of your learning short A this week. This is what our parents, many of them have asked for because they want to support the learning hand-in-hand, side-by-side with us, but it's really hard when teachers have so much to do to continually send up, send out updates. So, as a parent, and we encourage our parents to access this, to use it, to continue and promote conversations with teachers, you're going to be able to see that in math for the next unit into illustrative math, you're going to be learning about addition of two-digit numbers, and you're going to be learning about the different suffixes your children are learning about in foundational skills, and you're going to be learning the specific reading standards in literary or informational. You're going to be learning what they know in, or what they're going to learn in science and social studies. It's an invaluable resource, and we really hope parents take advantage of it and use it to help encourage that partnership. In addition, we have websites for elementary and secondary programs that if you're not sure how to help your child with the foundational skills, there are videos and resources right there for you.
No, I certainly appreciate that response. Excited for the rollout of Canvas as well as the family nights that you mentioned. Hoping to attend my kid's own family night, but also those kind of happening around the county. But just wanting to fully stress the point that parents are most interested in specifically building relationships with my child, and so wanting to hear from that building leader, from those assistant principals, from those counselors, specifically what the strategy would be in that particular school, or even within that grade band, we're wanting to understand, given where our iReady scores are, here specifically what we intend to roll out at X, Y, and Z elementary school, middle school, high school. So, appreciate the overall kind of county view. Again, very comprehensive, very thorough, but wanting to stress that this is something we drill down to our building leaders and have them prepared day one when parents and students start rolling back into the building, that they're ready to communicate from the outset. So, thank you.
So, just want to highlight that today and tomorrow, we have training going on with our building leaders. They are looking at their data. They're looking at a school improvement framework, and they are going to be developing their school improvement plan tomorrow, actually, they'll start the development, but we're going to be developing it throughout the summer, and then they will be sharing it with their families in the fall. And during the, the sharing of their school improvement plan, they should be able to share the strategies that they highlighted, that they're going to share with their families and how they're going to improve the student achievement within their schools.
We just want, yeah, a question if I may? Sure. Just wanted some clarification, Mr. Lowndes. You mentioned that going forward with the students who have IEPs in relation to their math and reading goals, could you say, could you just clarify what you said earlier?
Sure. So, at the high school level, when we talk to the folks at iReady, their, the data with the iReady scores, they do not have with confidence that it matches any grade level because they have not normed the data at the high school level. But they do have with confidence that it will show growth for an individual student, and it will show from where a student started to where they ended on a particular area of reading. And so, that's exactly what we need with a student with a reading goal. So, say for an example, a student had on their IEP that they want to improve comprehension. They will be able to tell by taking that iReady score in, by, in the high school years, whether the comprehension has actually improved from the beginning of the, or to the end of the year for an individual student. So, it's still very much relevant for measuring goals on an IEP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other question? Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Ms. Morley. On Slide thirteen, stretch growth.
Yes?
Could you just go over that again? I mean, if I look at this, I was trying to get back to the question. Should, should the dark blue, should that percentage be the same as everything that's not green in the other charts? In other words, the kids that are behind, ideally, that dark blue number would, would add up to the same?
No. So, let me, let me explain what, what it is. So, this is a statistical view. This is a nationally-normed assessment, and it has, I don't know, about six million kids that get assessed. So, what, what it says is that students have a typical growth. How much are they supposed to grow from year to year? And, and again, as mentioned earlier, it is the growth that a student, similarly situated students that start at that level, how much do they grow in a year? And so, that you can call typical growth. The problem that was brought up is if a student is on grade level and is, let's say, in the green, Mr. Lucas, and they did, and they did their typical growth for that year, they will remain in the green. But let's say a student is two years or three years below grade level, and they do a typical growth, which means that they have improved and they have grown, but because they're so far behind, they need to grow at a faster rate than the typical growth. And that is the, what we call the stretch growth. That means you need to grow a year plus every year so that in a couple, in a period of time, you, you catch up, right? Because you're behind. So, what you see here is take, let's say, first grade. If you take first grade, the light blue says that about fifty-five percent of the students that took the iReady assessment, I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm looking at the mathematics, grew their typical growth, their annual typical growth, out of all the kids we, we assessed.
Now, at the beginning, you said, this is for us, our data, or this?
This is our data. This is our data. Yep. So, of all the first graders in CCPS that took the iReady, they had about fifty-five, I can't see the number, fifty-five point six percent of them reached their typical growth, what statistically they were supposed to grow. The statisticians will tell you that's about how much they're going to grow. Now, remember, those kids could be at any green, red, yellow. They grew what they were supposed to grow. Out of the students that we tested this year, again, out of that first graders, right, about thirty-five percent of them grew more than just the typical growth. They actually grew faster. And these are students who could have been distributed in any point of the year at any, at any time. So, part of what we want us to understand is students who are behind actually have a lot more to catch up on, and they need to move faster. I'll give you a great example. I was looking at one of my own kids' iReady data, and my kid happened, one of them happens to be on grade level. She had zero, she had zero stretch growth this year, but because she was already testing on it, she still kept green, right? But she had zero stretch, stretch, stretch growth. So, what, what we're saying is this is something that we're now looking at and talking to teachers and discussing those individual learning plans that Ms. Smith is urging as a, that every parent wants to know for their child, and we're looking at students who are behind multiple years and talking about what is their individual learning plans that will accelerate their learning so they don't just have typical growth, but they have stretch growth over the course of the same year.
So, that dark So that dark blue included to the student that was a light green that made it?
So this doesn't actually. I gave you data for students that are in yellow and red.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so what we want to do, yeah, what we wanted to do is see where our students that we have to move, are we really moving them at an accelerated rate? So that's the data that we're sharing. So once again, we created this data because it wasn't given to us originally from I-Ready and what we noticed was the data that was being shared with us didn't match where our students were at the end of the year. And so that's why we went ahead and we created this data, look at the students that are in the yellow and in the red and how can we focus in on them and make sure that we're moving them at an advanced level.
One second, Ms. Lucas. So can I clarify that to the bar? So for a student that is below grade level, is there stretch growth then to get on grade level? Is that like overall or?
Well, that's what we need to do.
Why? But is it like if they're three grade levels below, but theirs potentially, hopefully to be maybe just one grade level below, like theirs is going to, I guess, adjust a little more, if that makes sense?
Yes. So individually, yes, they will calculate the stretch goal for each individual student depending on where, where that student is in comparison to what they know statistically is a, is a solid stretch growth that other students have made. So remember, this is an assessment that uses statistics to sort of figure out how much kids grow from looking at the population of students that they assess. And that's how we put it forward. But I think the main point for us is, as staff has said, single out students that are multiple years behind and then figure out what is the rate of growth that is, needs to be more accelerated and how do we do that to catch them up and close the gaps so that every year they don't lose ground. And what you see in some of the assessments, if we don't do that, we see what happens. We can't catch up and close those gaps by the time students leave elementary school and get into middle school.
That's my concern because if they're only coming within, let's say, one grade level every year, then they're never going to be above. And is there a point where, I mean, I'm sure there is where it just gets more difficult? You know what I mean? Is it, is it elementary transition, elementary to middle, or does it really vary a lot? Like at what point do we really need to focus and say that this student is X number of grade level behind, they statistically are going to have a much harder time catching up and this, this is who we need to focus?
So going into third grade is a huge transition year for academics and you really need to make sure that students have a sound foundational skill, both in reading and math, when they go into third grade because it gets much more difficult in the content in the third grade. Once again, in the middle school, it also gets more difficult and especially now that we're adding some high school level courses down at the middle school is very important. The one thing that I want to share, when you look at this data through the lens, think about the COVID years as well. So 1920, our students went out that spring, right? So 2021, they were virtual. And so when you look at the kids in the middle school years, they were in some crucial years in elementary that they were virtual with. And then 20, what did I say, 2021, then 21, 22, they actually were in masks in their schools with spacing and everything. And so when you think about that, look at the data and the impact that it had on some of our students and you'll see different classes that have fallen farther behind because depending on where they were in that period of time, like you're saying, that they're getting some crucial foundational skills and they might have missed them because they were virtual or they were, were in masks that year and there was a lot of disrupt, more disruptions than a, than a typical year if you weren't there that year without a mask. It's just interesting to look at it because we're seeing it and we're going to show later with the graduation year and dropout rates, what the impact those years had with our students.
Sorry, Mr. Lucas, I interrupted.
Yeah, no, one more thing. Thank you. That makes it a little clearer. We were, we were virtually the same from spring of last year to spring of this year. If I read that correctly. 1% change in the dark green, 1% change in the yellow. How does that compare, that's on Slide 7. How does that compare to state data? Do you know that? I don't, I don't know. I didn't see that in here.
We can, we can bring it up.
We can bring it up. We'll have to figure that one out.
Well, we have it from the last year's presentation on I-Ready, so we could sneak it in and see if we can, we can look it up before the, but we can, we can turn around and give it to you. The question is, are we grow, are we, is the state growing at a faster rate to catch up on the math than, than, than we are? And we can probably sneak it back and look at the June presentation from last year and look quickly at the MSD. So give us a moment and we'll try to circle back on that.
All right. Thanks.
I would say they are saying nationally that it is more difficult to catch kids up in math than it is in reading.
Always.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that, you know, for folks that don't understand why, it's because in math it's much more linear and each year builds on the next, whereas in reading, you can spiral down and then spiral back up.
Yeah.
And it's just easier to catch kids up in reading than it is math.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Morley.
Anyone else over there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. So I appreciate all the information too, lots of detail here, which I think is very helpful as a parent myself of a middle schooler. And I kind of honed in a little bit on seventh grade. So I understand all the interventions that are being planned overall as a system, but kind of to Ms. Smith's point, you know, individually speaking, when we see a trend in a particular grade, so like I kind of went through really quickly and looked at where we saw growth and where we saw sort of a decrease. And seventh grade was the only grade that saw a decrease in both math and reading. So what are we doing there to make sure that clearly overall, as you know, that those students in that grade need some additional supports? Are we looking at that or are we just looking at individually, you know, by school or by lump of grade, like middle school, you know, primary, secondary, et cetera? Because that really stands out to me and I think if I remember correctly from looking at it last year, and don't quote me, but it was sixth grade last year, so these are the same kids that are not showing growth.
So that's one of the reasons why we separated the, the math and the reading was we did notice that we were going to have to provide some more intensive supports with some of our students within the middle schools.
Okay.
And so we are offering different types of supports based on how far behind you are and where you're behind. So the I-Ready scores are allowing us to look at what students' needs are and then to target their needs. One of the things that we are doing with our middle school ELA teachers, for example, is they're relooking at the curriculum, relooking at the supports and relooking at the way we're teaching our students and assessing our students and making sure that we're assessing them and then determining what needs are the students and then providing extra help and supports based on the ongoing assessment.
Okay. So the labs are definitely part of that.
The labs are definitely part of that.
Okay. Okay, great.
And the other thing, just to let you know with middle school, so we, with HR, they're doing a great job of trying to go out and find, but it's also middle schools is the area that we have to provide the most professional learning for our teachers. And so we have an emphasis also going on there with providing additional help and support to our, our math and our ELA teachers in the middle school.
That's helpful. Thank you. And then my other question is, if we have students, obviously we're, a lot of focus is on students who are behind, right? Which rightfully so. But if we have students that are on grade level or even exceeding, because we do still have some students that are above grade level, what are we, what do their plans look like to make sure that they either stay on grade level or stay at the rate that they are, that they're achieving? Instead of, because obviously we're providing interventions for kids who are one, two, and three grade levels behind, but if you have a student who's on grade level, what are we doing to make sure that they stay there or that they continue to excel?
So first of all, we're providing, you know, really, we're focusing in on that really grade first instruction and making sure that all students are getting good first instruction at the state level or the grade level. The other thing that we're doing over the last couple of years, we look at our students, who can we accelerate? And so we're providing more opportunities for students within math at the elementary level to accelerate and making sure that our, we're not holding students back. Because that was one of the concerns, was we're focusing so much on our students that are behind.
Right.
What are we doing for our students that we could accelerate or for students that are on grade level to make sure that they are achieving at a high level? So I'm going to let these folks talk about some specific things that we're doing to address those concerns.
Okay. So in elementary math, part of that 30-minute flexible grouping time that we provide daily, it's for intervention, it's for reteaching, and it's for enrichment. And we really open up our enrichment curriculum to anyone who's on or above grade level. So we talk a lot in elementary about being screened for gifted services, but our enrichment curriculum is open and available and flexible. So if somebody's showing a high proficiency in our geometry standards, we're going to pull them into that small group enrichment, provide those services.
So like Mr. Lowndes said, we are offering more opportunities to accelerate students. So we have students in elementary school who are taking sixth grade math and they're doing this, sixth grade math teachers are actually teaching those fifth grade students. So we're giving them an opportunity to accelerate earlier. That was never an opportunity before. And so when they get to middle school then, as sixth graders are taking seventh grade math, then as seventh graders are taking eighth grade math, and then they move on to Algebra I and geometry even. We've caught, so to speak, caught up a group of students who were scoring in the 96% and above, and I think I've spoken about this before. They're currently, they're eighth graders currently in Algebra I. So we're giving them an opportunity outside of the school day to take geometry for original credit. So when they get to high school, then they're starting high school in ninth grade, taking Algebra II. So it really opens up a lot more opportunities for them in math land, gives them opportunities for early college and really, really accelerating their math skills. The lab classes are also for enrichment as well. So they're, the higher levels of labs are for students who need that extra push and who are capable of that extra push so that they can then experience that enrichment curriculum. So when they get to high school, then they're going into AP and honors classes.
Thank you so much.
And just for elementary reading, it's very similar to elementary math, our small group instruction time. There are small groups that are focused on enrichment. They use the gifted curriculum and they do cluster the children. So children of potential are included in that even if they're not identified gifted. We also have a very systematic program because gifted identification or even gifted screening doesn't start until the second grade, but starting as early as pre-K and K, our teachers have different indicators they're looking for. So we can tap into students of potential across the board and start really trying to nourish and nurture those skills early on. And we look honestly above and beyond just your typical reading and math measures. Students with different aptitudes in the areas of STEM or creativity, et cetera, to really make sure that we are looking at the whole child and giving every child the opportunity to succeed above and beyond grade level.
This is more for the public because we talked about this, the third grade, and it's very important because I want the parents to understand that that's where the school, the prison pipeline starts. If students are not on grade level by third grade, that's how they know how many prisoners there are. And I want to make, be very intentional when I say that, that your, you know, parent's environment is very important and we want to make sure we turn that, you know, turn the table on that. Because with that being said, is we got to make sure that they are on grade level in second grade. Because third grade, you're right, they turn into another learning, a learning environment. So actually, it's second grade, we got to make sure that they are on there. And I wanted also to say that problem solving, across reading, that's very important. I didn't see that in the slides, but when you have problem solvers throughout the reading subject, that's when you get a chance to engage and catch up because students are reading in math and in, and in English. So therefore you can make some ground there by catching up. So that's very important to make sure that, starting early, that they understand that, that reading, that math, solving those problems, that could be a way of also make sure those grades or levels are increasing. So that's kind of where we at with this. So I just want to make sure to plead with the parents again that, you know, their environment, their environment is very important to them. And want to make sure that we capture them or make sure that they are on our team and make sure that it's a community, it's a teamwork thing. It's, it's the parent, the student, and the school. And I'm going to add the administration in there because with those four, every child can be successful. So that's important for all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hancock? Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the, excuse me, presentation on the I-Ready data. Let's have a real quick question. You know, it's, to me, it's alarming that in first grade math, that 50, 57% of all first graders are at least one grade level behind in mathematics. That's the first I-Ready that's been taken. And then it, it all kind of snowballs down from there because then in first grade, you have to catch up to that grade level. And if you haven't quite caught up and then you're in second grade, you've got two or more and it's compounded itself each grade level. So I say that to ask the question, as we increase our early learning opportunities and as we increase access to pre-K and build more early learning centers, are we, what are we doing at an early age to try to raise that number coming in the first?
So thank you very much for bringing that up, Mr. Hancock. You're right. Like it's great that we are increasing the early learning opportunities for our pre-K students. I think our presentation earlier this year showed that our students that did go to pre-K really form much better than our students that didn't go to the, the pre-K opportunity. I'm going to have, just want to talk a little bit about the pre-K opportunities that we have coming forward because one of the things that I remind, want to remind the board is, is we are starting with three-year-olds this year with the idea that we are going to be able to even start earlier with our students and get them more ready for kindergarten and first grade by going two years of pre-K with us, both 30th and 4th grade.
So as I'm sure you guys have heard, we are expanding our early childhood opportunities. We're getting ready to open pre-K threes at Early Learning Center Waldorf and at some other sites. We did a very extensive search for our pre-K three curriculum, which is Frog Street. I think you know that because you approved it. Thank you. And our pre-K four curriculum, Connect for Learning, is very highly rated also. And we're in about the third year of implementation of that and we're seeing much more teacher efficacy and fidelity with the implementation of that. As we expand seats, we still don't get every child that we want in there. And when parents call and say, why can't every child go to pre-K, we want to carry the banner with them in the parade and allow that. I will say one thing that we did do, Mr. Hancock, specifically to your question, is we really reflected deeply on the kindergarten math program. So this year, this current year, which isn't reflected in the first graders' I-Ready data, we implemented illustrative math in our kindergarten because the, the curriculum that we used, to be quite honest with you, was not yielding the results that we wanted. And illustrative math is an evidence-based program. It has yielded positive results nationwide that it can show through its research. And we felt that that was a necessary change. It takes teachers a couple of years to really get very comfortable with the curriculum. We had an advantage when we implemented it in kindergarten that the rest of our teachers already knew how to do it. So they could benefit from those teachers' experience and guidance. But yes, we did make a shift in our, in our core curriculum because we didn't see the results. And we are anxious to see what that yields for us.
And the other thing, just to, to add on, is our, you know, our pre-K and our kindergarten classes have instructional assistance. And one of the things we've done the last couple of years and will continue to do is to make sure that they have the training they need in order to help and support our students within the classes. Because they're often in small groups in those environments and we want to make sure that everyone's trained and has an understanding of the curriculum.
Will you finish, Mr. Hancock? Yes, okay. All right. Just a couple of quick things. I know we're running, shocking a little bit behind time. Story of our lives. The first thing is I very much appreciate and I'm excited about camp. I think that we're overdue for something like this and the ability to see what our students are doing in real time. Kindly reminds me a little bit of what my boys used to do in pre-K where you'd kind of get like those daily summer where you'd kind of get like those daily summaries or something. You could kind of follow along in real time. And to Ms. Butler Washington's point, I believe this will hopefully help share some of the accountability with parents. And them being aware that, you know, you don't have to wait until the end of the marking period or whatever it is. You need to be responsible to make sure that you know, to the best of your ability, what your students are doing in real time and help your students understand as well when assignments or whatever is due. So just a suggestion that maybe, and I'm sure you probably are, but if you weren't, to incorporate these types of conversations in like the back-to-school nights, to have the PTOs promote them, to almost like overemphasize and overshare. Because we're not necessarily going to be able to capture all parents. But I think if you get that out there early and share what the partnership looks like. You know, we have expectations for your students, as you do as well. How can you help us to help you? And more importantly, to help your students. I really appreciated when Dr. Navarro had the state of the schools. And then we had like the breakdowns by school and even further drilling down into like grades or, you know, elementary, middle school. It was very helpful, very, very helpful. Because that one-on-one time changed a lot of the things that we did before. I'm proud to say now, my one son who was struggling because he stopped going to school in kindergarten, because that's when COVID struck, and he didn't go back in the building until second grade. He's now in fourth grade or rising to fifth grade. It took all that time to get him to now be an honors student. And it took a lot of work, a lot of tears, mostly from us. Because he hated school, just to be candid, because he's an extreme extrovert. And so I can only imagine a lot of similarly situated young students, I'm not surprised to see elementary school students struggle. Because many of them weren't in the building. And you know, those are our most vulnerable learners. So, you know, some of this data is not entirely surprising. I agree that we can't stay here. We have to keep pushing forward, candidly. So I share the concerns many of my colleagues have. I also, and we've talked to Dr. Navarro, Ms. Kramer and I, at our weekly meeting, about how we'd like to see going forward, data every month. And we're going to flesh out what that looks like. And in large part for me is to be able to capture some of these trends, some of these vulnerable subgroups in particular. To say, okay, we have a problem with third grade students that maybe are not, they're multilingual learners, for example. And why do we have this problem, in particular in now? And maybe we may not get there initially, but I'd like to be able to drill down so that we can start to really hone in on the students that start struggling early. Because I think to me, that is really the key. You can't let them go to second, third, and beyond because it gets that much more difficult, I'm preaching to the choir, to catch up later on. So that's something that's very important. And, you know, not to be Debbie Downer, but you know, we just passed the budget last week. So now I'm concerned, what are some of these supports going to look like in life? You know, we know what we're going to be facing. The extended learning opportunities, would this potentially impact some of the intervention?
So I will say that we've had some great discussions going on with Title I, with special education, and with our grant holders of the grant Title IV. And we're looking at how do we make sure that all the funds are identified to make sure that they're supporting our students? And I'll give you an example of Title I and the funding that they're doing. So as you know, the boost program this summer is for three weeks. Well, Title I then used their, their money to extend all for Title I to go an extra week. Knowing that, looking at their data, that some of their schools had to catch students up even more. And so that's the type of thing we're doing. We're looking at the grants, actually make sure that we're using that money effectively to support the extended learning opportunities and other ways to help and support our struggling learners.
Okay. Thank you so much.
I do want to give a caution with Canvas. I just want to remind everyone that it is an implementation the year next year that our students, or, I mean, our teachers are just learning how to do it.
Give them some brains.
You know, yes.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to say it's a silver bullet for next year.
I know, but I mean, it is one step, you know, closer. Okay. Sorry, we have computer issues. All right. Thank you, Mr. Loun. Okay, and now you're going to discuss graduation rates.
Yes. Thank you very much. Graduation rates. So when we talk about graduation rates, I just want to remind the board and our public that it's not the students that just graduated. We are looking at the data that's always a year behind. So we're going to be looking at 2023 graduation rates. And we're also going to be looking at 2022 graduation rates. Because one of the things that I want you to see going forward when Mr. Roberts presents the data is that it is taking some students longer to graduate. But when you look at our five-year cohort, actually, it's the same as the year before. And when you look at our graduation rate, although it dipped maybe a little in the four-year cohort, not that much, but it did dip a little. By the time it became a five-year, we were able to catch those students up. But once again, I just want to remind folks about the year of 2021, when the year, this graduating class of 2023, that they were virtual that year and then they were in math the year before. So that would have been their sophomore year, that they were virtual. And then their junior year, they came back in math. So when you look at the data, I just want you to think of that at this point. But I will say when you, and I'll come back and talk a little bit about, one of the things that we've done is put in a graduation tracker required by the blueprint. But it does help us look at when the students are coming in in ninth grade, how many of them are on track to graduate on time? And then that has really helped us focus in on the types of supports that they need to make sure that they're graduating on time. Mr. Roberts?
Okay, so just so you understand, there are three different types of numbers you're going to see here. You're going to see four-year graduation rate. You'll see a five-year graduation rate and a four-year dropout rate. Those are the numbers that Maryland sends to us. It's actually an adjusted cohort graduation rate. So you'll see that what happens is they talk with, when we start with the data, they'll start that first year in ninth grade. So at first-time ninth graders, and you'll have a set of students that start the school year as a first-time ninth grader. And we add in every student that transfers in. And we take out of the number all the students who transfer out. And then by the time they're seniors, that original group, however many students were left in that original group, and then we calculate how many of those actually get a high school diploma. So for example, there were 2135, 2,135 students in the start of the class of the 2023 four-year adjusted cohort. So these students were first-time ninth graders in 2019, 2020. 593 students were added to the cohort over those years. 504 students were removed. So by the time that graduating class occurred in 2023, there were 2,224 students. Of those 2224 students, 2,007 obtained a high school diploma within the four years, resulting in a four-year graduation of 90.24. So that's how they calculate that four-year. I'm going to, I'll show you some more specifics to see the difference between the four-year adjusted cohort rate and the five-year adjusted cohort rate. So the four-year adjusted cohort rate includes those who graduate at the end of the school year, their fourth, that fourth year, as well as those who graduate in the summer of that same year. So they're still considered that four-year adjusted cohort. They have to get that, that high school diploma, Maryland high school diploma to count. Students in that first year as ninth grader all the way through, those come in, come out, and then however many end up with it, that high school diploma at the end. Now, the five-year adjusted cohort includes all of those students who meet at the following year. But it's only at the end of that fifth year. The student graduates the summer of that fifth year, it doesn't get counted as a student who graduated within one of those cohorts. They are a graduate of ours, but it doesn't get included in the number of sports. So that's how that, that works. Then I'll get into the dropout rate here, which is just a four-year dropout rate. So you can see how those numbers are counted. So this is the first chart where we start seeing the actual rates. You can see the class of 2020, 2021, 22, and 23. And the blue is Charles County Public Schools graduation rate. This is the four-year graduation rate, which again includes those who graduate at the end of the summer of their senior year. And then in the orange is the Maryland. So you can see in each of these years, we are above Maryland in terms of our graduation rate. So then we move into our five-year graduation rate. And as Mr. Loun spoke, again, above Maryland, but we are staying consistent. So sometimes you can see, even though that graduation rate dropped in that four-year graduation rate, you can see that those numbers, after we get to that fifth year, they're very similar to where they were throughout those previous years all the way across. So graduation rate, four-year, five-year, still talking about that same first-year group, but it's a matter of when they get across that stage. So the last group here is this 2022. So we won't have the 2023 five-year graduation rate until the end of this year, which would be the students that didn't make it in 23, but that actually just graduated the class of 2023. So that would be within that. So then we also included Maryland four-year graduation rates by each of the school districts. So you can see across the state where those numbers were. Charles County at the 90.2%. And we also included each of the subgroups from 2020 all the way to 2023 by subgroup. So you could see the breakdown by subgroup with each of the different years. Okay, so the four-year dropout rate. The dropout is defined as a student who, for any reason other than death, leaves school before graduation or the completion of a Maryland-approved educational program, including a special education program, is not known to enroll in another school or state-approved program. So as we submit data at the end of each school year, there's a state ID. The student, the state monitors where these students go. They may leave our system if they go to another system, end up enrolling that system, maybe become a student for that school. And that particular student, if we don't have a documentation, they went somewhere else, they, they count as a dropout for us. So you can see at the bottom all the different ways that a student, what, what does not include in terms of a dropout for students. So this is tracked, again, at four-year rate, what, where we are in terms of the students that were started at that four-year cohort, that ninth, first-time ninth grader, and then as they move across the four years. So what we, what we're showing here is, the next one is the dropout rates for CCTS versus Maryland. You can see that our dropout rates consistently have been below those of Maryland. Recently, this 2023 group, we were at a 5.8. We moved up our dropout rate from 3.9. But again, you could see that Maryland moved up from 8.5 to 9.8. Now, on the, on the chart on the right there where it has the pie graph, it's the dropout students by race and ethnicity for that group. It's what percentage of that particular, of the, of the dropouts were of each of the different subgroups. So we're going to go into that a little bit more specifically. So you can kind of watch, see what, how that works out in terms of what percentage of the population of that graduating class were each of these students in, and then which of those were actually dropouts. So this is similar to what we just saw. You can see that this is breakdown of economically disadvantaged multilingual learners and students with disabilities, and in comparison to all students. You see a large dropout rate among our multilingual learners in comparison to each of the other groups. And on the far right is all students. And this is the growth, or the each value across each of the four different years. If Maryland suppresses any data for dropout rates at 3%, typically it's 5% suppression rate, but for dropout rates up to 3%, or they drop, they suppress at 95%, anything 95% or higher, it just marked as 95%. And suppression data is so that it's difficult to determine specifically which ones were actually impacted by the people who were there. And the subgroup, the subgroup is smaller than 10. So what we wanted to look at is, okay, we're seeing a dropout rate increase this year. And we wanted to really see over what was happening with students and over these years in terms of when they withdrew from our, from our system. So what this is, is we have a breakdown from ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And then the big bar on the right is just the total for the year, which includes all the different grade levels. So you could see in 2019, we had 125 students who were one of those three categories, or one of those four categories at the top, which the state codes are W-33 lack of interest, W-42 special cases, W-50 whereabouts unknown, or W-86 job. Those were reasons that were applied to what their withdrawal would happen to be for each student. So in 2019, had a total of 125 students, jumped to 136 in 2020. And then in 2021, the withdrawals that year were much lower. And this is, again, that year where a lot of our students were virtual. In 2021, till the end of the year, we had some students come back in different phases. And you could see in 2022, we had a large spike in the number of students who withdraw from, withdrew from our school. So that, that was that big jump you could see from 2019 to 2022. We went from 125 to 194 total students who withdrew. But that number has decreased from 2022 down to 2023 and down to 2024. So this is just based in synergy where we were in terms of students who withdrawn from our, our school district with each of those four different categories.
A quick question, Mr. Roberts. Any idea why that big spike in 2022?
That's COVID. So we're going to talk about that quite a bit, about what was the learning experience? Because we actually think 2021, had we been more stricter across the state on capturing data because everybody was home, we would have probably seen better numbers. But we'll talk about that in a few minutes around these different cohorts and what would, what it was like to not have ninth grade, not have 10th grade, or come back in, in some form.
So then what we really wanted to do was, let's take a look. We showed that pie chart earlier, what percentage of the group was, what percentage of the students who were dropouts were from each of those groups. So we really wanted to see what was that relation in terms of what their percentage of the actual graduating class? So the blue bar is each of the subgroups at the bottom, what percentage of the graduating class were that subgroup? Then in orange was the percentage of the class who were dropouts. So typically, we're, we're looking at economically disadvantaged students and what kind of impact various situations are having and what kind of, what kind of numbers are showing as a result. But if you look at economically disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged, 22.3% of the students in the graduating class were economically disadvantaged. But only 15.5% of those students of the dropouts were. So again, this, the orange bar is, among all the students who were dropouts, counted as a dropout against us for that particular year, what percentage of them were each of these subgroups? So again, the blue bar for economically disadvantaged, 22% of the students in that graduating class were economically disadvantaged. But among the dropouts in that class, only 15.5% of those students were economically disadvantaged. So there's a stark difference in terms of what, what students were represented here. So it appears to us, what we're seeing is those economically disadvantaged weren't as impacted by being dropouts. Maybe the COVID impact really wasn't as impactful in them. So anytime the bar on the right is larger, that those students were overrepresented in the dropout in terms of where they were in the graduating class. So if they're higher.
And I would just want to say, what I think we are looking at is that COVID impacted all kinds of students. Sometimes people stereotype and say, well, if you're economically disadvantaged, you're going to have higher rates of potentially being like, likely to drop out. And actually, in Charles County, if you go back to Slide 54 and compare, we, the state on average is almost a little over two times more likely to have economically disadvantaged students drop out than Charles County is, which was a surprise to us. As we unpacked the data, we, it challenged our thinking. It also reminded us of the socio-emotional impacts of COVID and returning to the, the school setting that devastated students regardless of their economic situation. And we had dropouts that were disproportionately represented in areas that we hadn't seen before when we look at sort of traditional data indicators. And I thought that was a really good point because it was just a broadband impact on a lot of these cohorts of students that were in those ninth and 10th grade years that are pivotal years for you to be able to be strong in, as, have a strong foundation and be successful in, in high school.
So the next one we had, we wanted to include, just for informational purposes, each of the high schools and then in comparison to where Charles County Public Schools was, the CCTS dropout rate for each of the different schools. So from 2019 all the way to 2023, again, data's suppressed at 3% for dropout. You can see just about every school had, had a drop something, I mean, it had an increase in that 2023, which 2023, which contributed to that 5.3% slowdown. So one of the things that the blueprint has done, and it's allowed us to be able to communicate with parents, as we've mentioned earlier, how important that is, is the ninth grade on track, the freshman on track. So when this first came out of blueprint, we were told there was going to be a ninth grade on track, freshman on track. In 2022, when we submitted data, we were told to use our local criteria. So for a student to be promoted to 10th grade, they have to earn six credits to be from ninth grade to 10th grade. So when we submitted data, we submitted data based on how many courses they passed. And that was what our local standard is. So then in 2023, the blueprint criteria was established. So there's three different pieces of that that are incorporated in being on track for ninth grader. So they have to earn at least five credits at the end of the ninth grade year, which ours is a little bit more stringent for the sixth grade piece, I mean, six credits for that for 10th grade. And then the other two are different. So we talked a lot, I know you guys have talked a lot about attend school more than 90% of the time, that's that 10% rule. So then the other one is fails no more than one semester of a core course. So we do have our local ability to determine what a core course is, so we use the four main levels, math, science, studies, and English, to indicate whether it's a core course. So as a result, we calculated some values based on that. So for the class of 22, you could see the ninth grade on track percent, meeting all three of those criterias, was 78%. The class of 2023 was 86.1. On the left-hand side is a ninth grade on track percentage, but you can see the official graduation rate on the right-hand side. So just using ninth grade data, what is shown with our blueprint criteria, we would have been in a world of trouble in terms of not having students graduate based on where they were being on track using that criteria. So you could see that the work that our systems do, and our schools are doing, to get students to the position to be able to graduate, you could see that official graduation rate. And as Mr. Lounz had indicated, on the right-hand side, we don't have the official data for the class of 2024, usually doesn't come out until March.
I want to talk a little bit about the graduation year, COVID, and what students experienced a little bit during COVID, because I just want to remind people, during the 19, 20 years, when people went out, the state no longer required the state test at the end of the year, because they weren't able to get it done in time. And many things, like we looked at giving students grace, and understanding that they went out, and they weren't going to be able to pick up their work, and we didn't have, you know, ways to engage all students, because all students at that time didn't have a one-on-one device, and we were all trying to figure out what to do if our students were going to be out the following year. And so I think you'll see that the graduation rate across the state, and for that year and the next year, things got, things improved, because the state actually lessened the requirements on students that graduated, as far as the state tests, and as far as helping students make sure that they were taken care of academically, and looking at the data, because everyone shows that the graduation rate is up there. The other thing I just want to, you know, we looked at the data, so one of the things about the dropout rate, it really makes us reflect on our practices, and what we're doing to help our students, and then why students dropped out at a particular period of time. And what we looked at was, we look at grades, and what happened while students were home in the virtual environment. And what we saw was that many of our students didn't do well academically, and many of them actually failed more than one class, which we think might have had an impact that following year when they came back, as to why we had so many students drop out. Because they just had such a bad experience, they might feel like they were falling behind, and some of them might have just decided to do something other than attend school. The other thing is, it's not cohort data. And the reason why I want to explain that is, if it was cohort data, your ninth grade year kids that year would be all kids that came in during that time period. But it's really students that were in the ninth grade at that particular time. So a student that did not earn enough credits to move on to a 10th or 11th grader, might have found it difficult to think that they were going to be able to graduate on time, and might have dropped out. So a student that might have been still a ninth grader because of credits, but should have been in the 10th or 11th grade, but while they were virtual and failed more than one class, might have chosen to drop out the following. Once again, we're just trying to figure out the data, and why the data is the way it is, and to make sure that we can disrupt it going forward, and provide students the support they need to be able to graduate. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I do want to point out here, that when you look at the class of 2024, the class that just graduated, when they came in, based on the on-track to graduate, 67% of them were at that point of ninth graders on track to graduate. So we have worked with them by providing extended learning opportunities, we've increased the number of courses that we offer for students to take as first-time courses in summer school and after-school opportunity, making it so they didn't have to fail a course in order to make up a course, but knowing that many of our students had to take additional courses in order to graduate on time. So we have taken some stances in order to help to keep our students on track to graduate. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and bring up Melissa, and she'll talk about what we've done to provide interventions to make sure that our students are staying on pace to graduate on time.
The graduation interventions. There are a number of things that we do to help students not only catch up, but to advance, so that they can have more opportunities available to them during the school day. One of the things that we do to assist students who have failed a course for a quarter is grade recovery. We start that in middle school, we offer it to all middle school and all high school students. So if they have earned below passing score for quarter one, then during quarter two, after school, or on the weekends, depending on when their school offers those sessions, they are making up the standards that were taught and assessed during first quarter. And same thing, they fail at a second quarter class, then they're making it up during third quarter, and so on and so forth. So this past school year, so 23, 24, we have 100, I'm sorry, 1,063 high school courses that were, or grades that were recovered, and 687 middle school grades that were recovered over the course of the year. We also offer credit recovery. So this is an opportunity for students in high school who have failed a course to make up that course, but during the school year, students can take up to two, or recover two courses a year. There are guidelines and stipulations that require them to attend sessions in person with a teacher, so that they are receiving instruction. And we have 131 students who participated this past year across our high schools that recovered 132 credits. So a good number of classes were recovered during that time. And then, of course, we have summer school. And in summer school, we offer students opportunities to make up classes as well, very similar to credit recovery, except it's done in a short period of time, about 18 days, and students come in person. In 22, 23, 305 students made up classes during the summer school, we had a 99.3 pass rate, and we had 1,072 students, high school students, recover courses, and they passed with a 93.4% pass rate. In addition, we offer original credit, so opportunities for students to take a course for the first time, and earn that original credit, that will help them to open up opportunities for them during the school year, during the school day. But also, it also does help students who are behind. They can take an original credit course and get that out of the way as well. And in 22, 23, we had 247 students participate in original credit over the summer, that was a 95.7% pass rate. The students do pretty well in that program. This year, this was the first year that we offered what we're calling senior summer school. And this was really geared towards students who were seniors, who were supposed to be graduating, but who had failed two classes. Not more than two, not less than two, but two. So they could complete one class during senior summer school, which started on May 22nd. So they, their last day of school was on the 17th. Then they were told, you're not going to graduate, because you failed two classes, and so you need to make those classes up or come back next year. So they came back to school, to their own school then, on May 22nd, and they worked until the very last day of school, completing and recovering a credit that they needed to earn. That put them in a position to then only need one credit for summer school. So those students are continuing on during summer school, and then they will graduate, hopefully, if it all goes well, and they pass that class, at the end of summer school. So again, this was the first year that we offered this, and we really did this to support those students who needed two classes, because in the past, they could earn two classes in summer school, now they can only earn one. We had 19 students across our seven high schools who participated in this opportunity, and they were all successful in completing those coursework, that coursework, and earning that credit. We also offer extended learning opportunities in middle and high school. These are different at each high school sometimes, sometimes they're the same. But the Office of Teaching and Learning, we approve their plans. So a school will say, we want to offer tutoring to this specific group of students in this specific course for this period of time, we need this many teachers, here's our budget. They submit those plans to us in the fall, and we approve them, and then, you know, pending everything looks okay, and then they carry out their plan throughout the summer, or I'm sorry, throughout the school year. So different schools do different things. We have schools that do offer peer tutoring, we were talking about that before, where they have their math honor society students, or their honor society students actually peer tutoring, students who need some additional support. We have programs where students are coming, and they're receiving tutoring from FEB tutoring. We have all kinds of different extended learning opportunities, and they do look different depending on the school and the specific needs at that school. We offer, as you know, the Virtual Academy for our students in grades nine through 12. And students in the Virtual Academy can earn eight credits in one school year. So that's one credit more than all of our high schools, except for North Point and St. Charles, there are also eight credits. But in this past school year, we had 110 students who are graduating from the, who have graduated from the Virtual Academy, through the Virtual Academy. And that included 13 students that were out of their graduation cohort. So oftentimes, especially for students who are behind, who are feeling uncomfortable going back into the school setting, this is a really great opportunity for them. A lot of times, students are working, and they need a little bit of a more flexible schedule. And sometimes we have students that only need three or four classes in order to graduate. And so they come into the Virtual Academy, they're able to do two classes a quarter, and really be done with school earlier than if they were in the traditional school setting. So this has worked really well for a lot of our students. And then, of course, we have extended-day original credit. We've been offering this for the past few years now. These are opportunities for students to earn original credit after school. So the sessions are virtual, there is instruction aligned, lots of work, they're earning the whole credit, the entire course, so they're doing it in a semester. And students can earn, or participate in this opportunity once a year. So for 23, 24, in the fall, we had 236 students earn a credit through extended day. And in the spring, 402 students earn a credit through extended day. So a lot of students taking advantage of these opportunities. My own student did her financial literacy credit through this opportunity, so it does work out really well for our students. In addition, we spoke about earlier, we have 35 eighth-grade students who are currently in Algebra I during the school day, taking geometry, honors geometry, virtually outside of school. And this was something where we identified the students that could really be accelerated, we met with their parents, it was an optional opportunity if they chose to do that. Some students get involved and realize, this is really too much for me, I need to be in person during the school year. And so we allow them to come out of that, but 35 students, which is a great number. And then we have 53 early college students who earned their personal financial literacy and health two credit this year virtually. So they did this work on Fridays, because as you know, early college students go to school Monday through Thursday on CSM's campus. And so that on Fridays, when they're at home doing all their coursework for CSM, they would hop online with their teacher, and they took care of, got those credits out of the way as well. So in total, 726 students participated in some kind of original credit opportunity.
Thank you, Melissa. At this time, we'll take questions on graduation, what we're doing to keep kids caught up, or any questions you might have on the data.
Thank you, Mr. Lounz. I remind our board members, we are running one hour behind, so if you could please make your top two points. Is that Ms. Smith?
Yes. And thank you for that time check, I will be mindful in my comments. Appreciate the second part of the presentation, you wanted to focus on dropout rate. We, of course, want to retain all of our students as best we can, but I also know that Maryland has a requirement of compulsory attendance from five years old to 18. So I'm just curious, when we talk about dropout, so what does that look like? Are these our students who are over 18 who are leaving us? Or if they're under 18, then what happens if they leave our system?
So those students count against us if we don't, if the whereabouts are unknown. And I think, Mr. Roberts, they had that up there. So when we come back next school year, we'll have a certain number of students that, for whatever reason, do not show up on the first day of school, and never show up. And if we don't find where they are, whether they went to another school, either in-state or out-of-state, or whether they went back home to their country, if they're from a different country, they will count as a dropout because of whereabouts unknown. And so that's why we don't get the data until a year later, because they have to really look at all the data to try to figure out, if a student is counting against the school system, can they find out where that school is? And is that school, that student located in another school district? But many times, even though it's compulsory, some of the students just do not show up, and we never find out where they are.
And I know that we have a variety of data, and sort of points, almost like an early warning, oh, excuse me, early warning system, that kind of gives us an indication of students who may be at risk for dropping out. And I'm curious, what work or engagement do we do with the parents to kind of help them work with us to keep their child in school? We have all of these really great opportunities in different pathways, for students who may be kind of teetering on that brink, but I'm curious how we educate parents to help them help us to help their child.
Well, there's, one thing we do is, we run reports all the time for students that are behind on credit. And we send it to the schools, with the schools, and ask the schools, can you contact the parents, let the parents know. And that's one of the ways that we identified students for our summer school. We ran the failure list of every student that didn't pass a class for the fourth quarter, or for the year, I should say, for the year. And then we gave those names to the schools, so that the schools could then invite those students to summer school. We also look at putting out big blasts, working with Ms. Mackey's department, the Communication Department, to let parents know that there are summer school sign-ups, and if your student didn't pass the class, then they should be attending summer school to make up those credits.
Just last question, Jerome Malle. I do not see our indigenous students represented on the list of categories. I'm curious, do they fall in two or more races, or?
If the subgroup is smaller than 10, then it's not included. Or it depends on how they identify themselves, too.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. One second. Before I forget again, Ms. Brenda Thomas, comments or questions? Brenda, if you're speaking, you're muted.
Oh, okay, hi. And a question?
Yes, do you have any questions or comment about graduation, the graduation rate?
Oh, um, a little lower, wasn't it, this time?
What'd you say, sorry? You said it was a little lower? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we just made it include that, so we don't leave that low anymore. That's all the comment I have.
Okay, thank you. And before, one second, I want to go to our incoming swap. Do you have any questions or comments, Mr. Verk? No, okay. I think I saw Mr. Lucas first.
Yeah, just real quickly, when you speak to economics advantage, is that farms, or is it a little deeper than that?
No, it's farm.
It's farm?
Yeah.
That's it?
Thank you. Ms. Butler-Washington.
Again, although our graduation rate was low, but I looked across all the other schools, it's the same, it was pretty much the same, besides a couple of. The dropout rate is 5.80. I just want us to get a plan together when we see these students that do not come back to school. How are we reaching out to parents? How are we encouraging and saying, you know, I understand that they didn't come back to school, but this is all we offer, and maybe that student can fit into one of those buckets? Because I do truly believe that there's a lack of not knowing where to put your child, or just giving up on your child. Because I do not believe in giving up on any child. So if we can make a strategy to, you know, go after those students, because those are students that's going to be on the back of the community if we don't do that. So that's very important to them, so that we can reach out, back out to them, and reach and get something together for them.
No, I agree, and that's one of the, some of the work that the PPWs do. They look at students that are not showing up at work, and they're making home visits, and they're working with families to try to figure out why they're not attending. And if it's some reason that they need extra help, extra support within the community, they try to connect them with that. And then if it's some academic reason or other reason, they are working with the schools and working with our Student Services Department to help those families. But I agree, it's important to reach out to those families that are not showing up at school.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again, Mr. Lounds and at all, for all of the information you provided. This is just a tremendous amount of data, and obviously, a lot to digest, but a couple things stood out to me. So I understand and appreciate the breakdown of the four-year cohort versus the five-year students. And that is helpful to see that it's not necessarily always less students graduating per se, but that some students are taking longer. And I can appreciate that, but obviously, I think we would all agree that the goal is that they finish on time. And so just want to, you know, make sure that we're not losing sight of that, because if you look at the data since 2020, we've had a decrease in the four-year, regardless of how you want to look at it, you know, we've had a decrease in the four-year graduation rate consistently, it's gone down. And we don't want to continue on that trajectory, because at some point, you know, we're going to, the five-year is not going to, we're not going to catch up to that, you know what I mean, if we continue to decrease. So I just want to make sure that we're still keeping sight of that, even though it's helpful to know that, okay, these students didn't just not graduate, many of them came back a fifth year and graduated, that's great. But we just really need to be mindful, though, that we still have a decreased graduation rate consistently over the last five years or so. And the other thing that stood out is two particular schools on the 57. The dropout rates doubled over the last year. And it's really concerning to see those numbers jump out at particular schools, particularly like St. Charles, who was like less than 3%, and then all of a sudden, they're at a 6.58. You know, that's more than double, you know, at that point, because less than 3% is not 3%. So it's just concerning, and I would encourage, you know, Dr. Navarro and the team to really maybe take a deeper look at those particular schools, at what may be happening with those particular students. I don't know if it's a higher number of students who maybe, you know, were behind at those schools, I don't know what the data could indicate there, but clearly, we have some outliers. And of course, we want to, we want all of our students to be successful, but that just jumps out at me when I see two schools, La Plata and St. Charles, rates have significantly doubled. And obviously, we have, at almost every school, except North Point, we have, you know, dropout rate that is concerning, but definitely, those two really stand out, and so I think that it's worth looking into, to see what is different about those particular schools. And to Ms. Butler-Washington's point, like being proactive about those, maybe, maybe they don't know, hey, you know, you're falling behind, you can go to summer school, we don't charge you for that, you know what I mean? Maybe they don't know that. Or, hey, you're not comfortable in the school, the traditional school setting, Virtual Academy is an option for you. You know, maybe the students do not know, or the parents do not know, that, hey, we really want you to finish in whichever way that works best for you and your family, but please come back, complete your diploma, you know, and let us help you find the best way for you to do that. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Warren?
Hi. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, quick question, the grade recovery intervention, is that offered every semester? What is the criteria for eligibility for that? Since we're talking about eligibility, I'm just looking at all of these interventions, and it would be nice to know how, how many students take advantage of, or even aware to Ms. Trimmer's point.
So grade recovery is offered in quarters two, three, and four. So if a student, the students who fail quarter one, they recover that grade in quarter, during quarter two, after school, or on Saturdays, depending on when the school sets up the sessions. And students who fail in quarter two, they recover that grade in quarter three, and students who fail in quarter three, recover that grade in quarter four. And I think the numbers were, we had 1,063 course grades recovered in high school this past school year, and 687 course grades, individual quarter grades, recovered in middle school.
I won't go into detail about that, but I'm just thinking about eligibility, since that's on the table, we're talking about that, how does that impact, you know, around sports and different other extracurricular activities? But thank you for that clarification.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Butler-Washington.
Thank you very much.
Very detailed.
So far behind.
Yeah, I know. No, it's great information. So to that point, does anyone need a bio break? Five, 10 minutes, so keep pushing?
Yeah, the question.
Oh, you did have a question? Oh, yeah.
Um, I had a question pertaining to the recovery, that it's great that we offer grade recovery and credit recovery in summer school, but is there any, are we looking into expanding what that's available for? Because for a lot of courses, that's not available. For example, a lot of courses that are really very easy to fail, like AP classes and CTE classes, is it possible to have those also added to recovery? Because we're talking about eligibility, those are courses that people are very likely to fail as well.
Yes, absolutely, good point. So we ask schools to look at their data each quarter and focus on the highest need courses. So courses that the most number of students failed. And they then offer those courses, because of course, we have limited staff, that we only have so many teachers who can meet with students after school. But also, we use Apex as our curriculum. And so we have to offer courses that we have Apex curriculum for, because again, these are the limited number of sessions that are available for students. So a lot of time, then they're working through that Apex platform, which has tutorials and has additional teaching, so when they're not sitting there in front of a teacher, then they have that support that they need instructionally to be able to pass that coursework. And not all courses are offered on Apex, specifically AP courses. And so it is something that we consider every year. We have routinely offered additional courses every year, and I think we'll probably continue to do that, but it's up to the school then to determine what their highest need courses are, and essentially, where they'll get the biggest bang for their buck. How can they support the most number of students? And that's how we make those decisions.
Thank you for that answer.
Anything else, Mr. Verk, if you were finished? Okay, just a quick thumbs up, does anyone want like a five, 10-minute bio break? Are we, are we good? We're good? Okay. All right, I know, but I don't want to hear it later. All right, I mean, I'm just saying. Up next, under unfinished business, is a discussion about the cost to attend Q.
So I just want to remind the board, there was a request from Ms. Butler-Washington about the, whether or not the board would have flexibility in looking at attending another, a different national conference other than an SBA. And I believe Ms. Butler-Washington acknowledged that the board members attend a local conference, which is made. So I attached an email that I sent to the board, because I believe my follow-up was, is it more expensive? Is it less expensive? Is it about the same? And Ms. Butler-Washington noted that she was bringing this up right now, because she wanted to take advantage of the early bird, sort of, early bird, early registration fee, sorry. And so I, the email that you see there is really sort of my overview about the cost. And basically, what it says is, if this is a change, an equal change, it's going to be about the same cost that it would if a board member decided not to go to NSBA, for example, and then instead go to Q. Just as a reminder, these organizations are linked together in many ways. So I just wanted to give the board that information as it discusses its, the request that Ms. Butler-Washington brought forward.
Ms. Butler-Washington, as a person that brought it, do you have anything you want to add or mention?
Uh, yes. I wanted to ask you about Navarro, if, if the board could, would it be a issue if they go to both NSBA and Q?
It's not an issue necessarily. I think the only thing that I said in my email is, if board members decide to go to both, it's just going to require that the board increase its budgeted amount under professional development, from what it approved when it passed the budget in June. Because there, you know, we estimated the budget for the board to attend MAE, and then to attend a national conference, which tends to be an SBA, and then some local regional ones. And so that's how we estimated that. But if you add, if any board member adds in addition to that, we're just going to need to get an approval to add more funding to your budget.
And just to reiterate, I found the email, the early bird deadline is $675 before June, July 19, 775 after. And if I'm understanding correctly, you said that to Navarro, if a board member opts to attend MAE and Q, it's approximately the same cost as MAE and NSBA, for example. Yeah, roughly. The issue comes in if we want to do MAE, NSBA, and Q potentially. So is there, you want, you finished?
I was going to ask what you asked the board to entertain during both Q and NSBA.
I was going to say, do you want to make the motion, and then we can?
Yeah. I move that the board attend both NSBA and Q and MAE conference.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Warren, okay. And any discussion?
So Dr. Navarro, about the, what you're talking about in terms of having to increase the budget for the board's budget, or if we were to do this, is that an approval process that would be like an intercategory transfer type of thing? Or how would that, what would that process look like?
Yeah, so if, if, if you add another conference, another national conference, let's say there's 10 of you, let's say all 10 attend, we estimate that attending a national conference is about $3,000 per person, so we're talking an additional $30,000 that is not currently in your budget, which means that Karen would have to take it out of somewhere else, and come to the board and present where it would come from, because the budget's already set. So we just have to move from another location, and just off the top of my head, I'm not sure where that would be taken from. It could, it may not require intercategory change, because we might take it out of Kevin Loun's PD budget and conference budget. And so it won't require an intercategory change, that's what happens when you go along. And, and it may, right?
Right minute, Mr. Loun.
So. I have just more along the lines, thinking about, will we have to get, would this be something that had to be submitted to the commissioner for approval?
It could if, 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 it could if it's an intercategory change in enough funding.
That would be a concern of mine, given, you know.
Yeah, I just don't know if that would be the case at this point.
Right, but it could be.
Yeah, it's a could be.
Is there a certain amount that would potentially trigger that?
No, anytime, we already have a budget set with categories, and so anytime we switch even a dollar above the category, that is considered intercategory change. We do a lot of these swaps throughout the year, but multiple times during the year, we go to the commissioners and say, can you approve this amount of money moving from this bucket to this bucket because of these needs, as you have seen as Karen presents to the board? But we come to the board first.
One other question, I just wanted to know, just right now, do any other board members have an interest in attending both conferences? Just curious. NSBA and Q.
Interesting.
It's going to depend on the budget.
It's going to depend.
So Ms. Warren, are you saying yes?
Yes, I'm interested in attending both.
Both, okay, and Ms. Butler-Washington? Yeah, and nobody else?
It would depend on the budget.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
So if we, I know Dr. Navarro said 30,000, but clearly, it's not, it's not going to be 30,000, so every board does it, 10, so would it be safe to say it would be less than that amount?
The most, the most that it would be is if every board member attended, it would be 30,000 the most. Not every board member attends the national conferences, as is today.
Okay.
Ms. Smith, I'll throw your hand.
Yes, this is more so a comment than a question. I would not be in favor of the motion as presented. While I am one of the most staunch advocates for professional development on this board, I would not be in favor of spending this type of money at this time, especially given the conversation we've had over the past several board meetings about the fiscal terms we're preparing to enter. I think there are other opportunities that we can take advantage of that are either lower cost or no cost. And just to help my board members recall, I'm the one that was advocating for, in our handbook, that we make it very clear that we should attend at least one, some type of professional development within the course of the year. But I would not be in favor of this motion, again, just given the budget situation.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Hancock, Mr. Lucas? Okay. Yeah.
Real quick, kind of, echoing Ms. Smith's point with the budget, being the way it is, I do think it looks bad to, even though it's not a lot of money, it just doesn't set a good precedent to do it right now. I would be in favor personally, if someone wanted to pick between two. I think a board member should have the right to go to any conference they feel they would get the vote that of. That's just my personal, personal thoughts on it.
Thank you. Ms. Brenda Thomas, any comments or questions? If you're speaking, Brenda, you're muted.
Um, what part are we on now?
We're discussing Q and possibly. Yeah, we were just talking about, so Ms. Butler-Washington raised, presented a motion for board members to consider attending MAE, Q, and NSBA. So we're just having a discussion, Dr. Navarro was saying that if all 10 board members attended, it potentially would be an additional 30,000. She also noted, historically, we do not have all board members that attend, so the final budget would really depend on the interest. So we were just discussing how people felt about, about her motion, about possibly attending all three.
Um, I think NSBA is okay for me, I'm not that interested in Q.
Okay. So you're interested, just to clarify, in, personally, in MAE and NSBA, are you open to other board members who want to attend Q in addition to those two? Or do you, would you prefer that board members just attend two? That's kind of where the conversation just went.
I prefer just to attend the two, because we just don't have the funds to try to add another one.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Butler-Washington.
I was going to amend my motion.
Okay.
Okay, my motion would be, I move that we attend either Q or NSBA and MAE.
And MAE, okay. Is there a second? Ms. Warren?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So this, I think I heard Ms. Butler-Washington seconded. So it's either or, attend MAE or?
No, it would be MAE and either NSBA. It would be Mabe and either NSBA or Q. So, you're still attending two?
Yeah, Mabe and/or.
Yeah, NSBA or Q, yeah. Yeah. And I was gonna say that I think that, um, you know, as I said, I had, I definitely have an interest because, and for the, you know, benefit of the public, that people understand, you know, why do they want to attend all these conferences? Speaking for myself, although I know others would agree, there's an incredible amount of information that's shared at these conferences, a lot of resources, a lot of connections, and you get the opportunity to see education on the state level and to connect. I mean, we've come, and national, thank you for that. And that was, I was thinking national, I didn't think, yeah. But, um, it, the amount of information that we have received and taken in and come back and made changes, of course, directly impacts Charles County. So, um, there's high value in that. I certainly hear and echo my colleagues' concerns, and I had the same concern in terms of budget, knowing not everyone was gonna attend. But I also want to be fair, because then you don't want to get into, well, how do we make those decisions about who can attend? So, um, I, I agree with your amended motion, and maybe this isn't the year to, you know, to look at attending all of them. Because it does sound like a lot of money until you consider the value candidly that you get, and then the percentage of the budget. So, um, I, um, I, yeah, appreciate the, the suggestion. Uh, is there any other discussion? Oh, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, I was gonna say, um, you know, thinking over it, I do agree with the amended, I think, motion, more so just because of the potential to have to do an intercategory change this year. I think if we want to do this going forward, maybe plan forward in the budget for next year, that way we don't fall into those situations, you know, if we feel it's appropriate, obviously depending on what's going on, you know, with our budget for next year. Um, so I could definitely support the motion the way that you reworked it.
And one final point, I think we get commitments, because these dates are released early, and we get commitments from who's interested, and then that can form the budget. You know what I mean? So, we could say, okay, maybe there's four board members that are interested in all of them, et cetera, et cetera. And then we can kind of work backwards, maybe. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Oh, right, that's a good point. Uh, well, go ahead, Ms. Kramer, I thought you had it up.
Sorry, I was just gonna also highlight for the board, other, my colleagues, I don't know if you saw in Dr. Navarro's email, but that this year, particularly the Q conferences fall on one of our work session days. So, I would like for us to try, obviously, try to avoid conflicts. Of course, this year, you know, we don't have everyone going, that may not be such a huge issue, but we definitely need to be mindful of that. You know, obviously, they're not checking everybody's calendars, you know, to see. But just something that, you know, if you're, if you are interested in Q and this motion does pass, um, we do have a conflict with the October work session as it relates to the Q conference, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for that, Ms. Kramer. There's no further discussion. Um, the amended motion, again, is for board members to attend Mabe and either, either NSBA or Q for, it is, it's 24-25. Yeah. Ms., do you have a comment, Mr.?
I do. So, why do we have to vote on? I get the original motion because it had budgetary impact. I don't...
Because we don't currently attend Q as it stands right now, and we've had a lot of discussion about this, as you know. And it, hold on, you asked a question. And there were some board members candidly, unless they've changed their opinion, that initially were against us attending Q. Because, you know, we had the opportunity last year for two people to attend, and that didn't proceed because there wasn't enough interest in the board. So, personally, I don't see any harm in voting on it, because I like to have it on the record that we, as a board, are supporting board members to attend Q in lieu of NSBA. Or not, yes.
My point is, there's, there's nothing in our, in our policy that says specifically what conferences we attend. There's been other conferences and trainings that are not NSBA, that are not Mabe, that board members have attended, and it didn't require any sort of voting. If there's a training, another training that someone wants to take, uh, just, that's all I'm saying. If there's no, if there's no budgetary impact, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why. Mr. Schwartz, once the time in, the issue before in attending all additional conferences, but there's a, a threshold, a dollar limit, that, uh, board members can expend for training that had to be deemed necessary to do the job, and that's where the issue with the Q conference came in, and it wasn't clear that, that was directly aligned with, um, with the mission of the school system. So, that's, that was the whole issue about Q, going to Q, that's all.
Right. So, is that issue, are you saying that issue's not been resolved for you? Because that's, that's where we left it when we last discussed it.
Sorry?
I said, that's where it was left when we last discussed it.
Question for Mr. Schwartz. I mean, certainly, if, if, if you were, if someone was attending all the conferences, it might be an issue. If you're just replacing Q with NSBA, then, then that dollar limit doesn't come into effect. And, and Mr. Schwartz, if you want to comment, because, because I know I'm speaking very vaguely.
Is there anything you need to add, Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah. Just because the board had previously, previously discussed it and determined that Q was not the conference that we fund, uh, board members go to. So, this is the first time we're agreeing that board members can go to Q, and can use board funding to attend Q. So, I think that's why the vote would be necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Kramer?
And I was just gonna add too, uh, Mr. Lucas, um, yeah, what Mr. Schwartz said, obviously, because previously, to my knowledge, even in previous boards, in terms of local conferences, perhaps, board members have attended, but there has not been attendance at a national, another national conference, other than NSBA, to my knowledge. I mean, I know you've been...
That's certainly since we've been on.
Right. I mean, since we've been on, for sure. And I don't think in previous boards either, certainly you have more knowledge on that. But, um, and the other thing is, is that, um, because in the handbook, we discussed, and it's in the handbook, that we would, for, the board would determine what conferences that, um, the school system would, um, pay for, as Mr. Schwartz stated.
All right. We'll end discussion there. Uh, the motion, again, is for board members to attend Mabe and either NSBA or Q. All in favor? Um, Brenda, are you, um, I can't see if you're raising your hand. We're voting on attending Mabe and either Q or NSBA. Are you in favor? Okay, your hand is raised. All right, thank you. I believe that is unanimous. I can't quite, that is unanimous. Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Um, we next had board accomplishments, but, um, I'd like to go a little bit out of order because we do have the one action item, which is eligibility. I'd like to kind of put a pin in that, um, because that is, that is still pending. So, um, as you all are aware, and hopefully there are millions watching in the public, uh, we've had several discussions around eligibility. And, uh, Mr. Lucas, he's like 100. Uh, Mr. Lucas had proposed, um, that we, uh, that he proposed, uh, a new policy. Uh, yeah, it's not loaded, I'm not seeing it. I have it open from before. So, if, if anyone isn't seeing it in the work session, I would say go back to the, um, meeting last week on the 11th, um, just so you have it in front of you. And it's the one called Eligibility Changes Proposed by Mr. Lucas, 52224. Um, and I had pulled it up to compare it, um, to the previous proposal by the superintendent. And, you know, after discussion with Mr. Schwartz, I understand that that would be potentially a substantive change. So, we'll proceed with voting on what's before. Um, at this time, the chair will adjutant a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
To approve, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Um, it's been moved, um, by Mr. Lucas and seconded by Ms. Butler-Washington to approve the, um, proposed eligibility change made by Mr. Lucas on 52224. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion, Ms. Thomas? No.
Ms. Smith has her hand up.
Okay, Ms. Smith.
Sorry, just very briefly.
Yeah.
Um, as I noted in our last meeting, I still think there's some work here to be done. Um, and given, I would actually request that perhaps Mr. Lucas and Ms. Amicia Thomas are able to work on this, depending upon where the vote goes. Um, but I would ask that they be able to work on this kind of offline and bring something back to us for consideration.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Thomas, did you say you had something? No. Okay, thank you. Any, okay, Ms. Kramer?
Real quick, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I also, you know, obviously, expressed my concerns about, you know, um, the pol, the proposal, as Mr. Lucas have presented it. Um, but, you know, would, would potentially be able to support it if, you know, we could continue to look at this. Um, I am honestly more in favor of a 1F per year scenario, but understand that there may be some work that needs to be done in order for the superintendent and staff to be able to operationalize that, um, as opposed to just allowing an F in the fourth quarter. But if this is where we are right now, and we can potentially take some steps to get closer to that, um, I would definitely like to see that happen.
I'm, I'm in agreement with this as well. I think that there is still, based on previous discussions, there were still some concerns. And, um, in particular, there were some equity concerns raised at the last board meeting that I personally would like to flesh out. But, um, I do agree with us voting on it today. Uh, Ms. Butler-Washington?
Yeah, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I, I'm not for F, but for the fourth quarter, um, that could be summer school, they can do it, and they can be able to, because I do truly believe if the resources that we have abiding, there is not an opportunity for me that students are behind. So, if you want to play sports, you come to school, we have to do the work. And having an F every quarter is not acceptable, because that F could lead to another F, which would, in turn, they would not graduate. So, that is my mainly concern, that if we allow F and we're not overseeing what F, and we leave it to the parents to determine, we're gonna have a, a room full of parents that's saying, you are the one who allowed the F. Why didn't you make sure that they graduate? So, that's like a, I can see, i- i- it's just too many moving parts, because we can't ask the counselors to do it, it's too much. So, and we're relying on the parent and the student to make sure that they graduate. We already know that don't work. So, I don't want to give room to where we add, and we put a policy that says, get an F, it's on you all. And to me, that's something that's gonna be detrimental to us. So, you know, I agree on it what it is now, but if it changes, I'm not in agreement with that.
All right. Uh, did you have your hand raised, Mr. Burke? Do you want to make a comment? No. And this is something we can vote on, not yet, just FYI. Who? No, 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 no. Nothing. Oh. Who would this smile? Oh, I'm sorry, you, I forgot July 1st. I'm sorry, I'm thinking... It's a long day. It's a long day. You're right. It would have been. It would have been. Okay, let me correct my, I apologize, Mr. Burke. I didn't mean to get your hopes up. Okay. Okay. Ms. Kramer did, I know, it's so wrong. I forgot he's, you know, he hasn't taken office yet. Okay, final point, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me. So, just to that point, Ms. Butler-Washington, even if this passes, just understand that not every class is offered in summer school, so we don't know that these kids will still be, they still could fail and fail, fail the class, which could potentially lead to not graduating. So, this is not a failed state for that, um, because, one, they, we're not, we can't require them to go, so they could fail and then say, well, I'm fine, I'll come back next year and retake it, or they could do grade recovery or whatever. Um, and then there, also, there's the issue that we brought up last time, that not all classes are offered in summer school. So, um, this helps some kids to be able to do that, but it's not gonna capture everybody. So, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. All right. Um, it has been moved and seconded that we accept, um, the proposed eligibility policy that Mr. Lucas presented. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand. Raise your, oh, you're in favor. Ms. Brenda Thomas, raise your hand. Okay. And oppose. Right, okay. So, the policy passed. All right. Thank you all. Um, before we get to board accomplishments, which will be our final thing for the evening, I just wanted to remind board members that we had discussed, um, a few board meetings ago, and mentioned again when we met in November with our, um, elected officials, that we, as a board, um, not unanimously, but, uh, by majority, had voted to, um, consider increasing board compensation, understanding that this is not something that would take effect, um, correctly, Mr. Schwartz, you said, maybe for two or three years? Next election cycle, thank you. Um, so, to that end, um, when we met with the, our, our delegation in November, they had suggested, oh, okay, they had, okay, they had suggested that, um, we, uh, form a committee to study board compensation, um, from community members, to then bring a recommendation to the board. So, in light of that, I would like to task the superintendent to please, um, put this committee together to set, study board compensation, and to report back to us, uh, potentially by the fall. Um, there's not necessarily a sense of urgency per se, because, again, this is something that wouldn't be taking effect until the next election cycle in 2026, but just to kind of keep it on our radar, and especially as we prepare to have our, um, fall legislative breakfast again. Okay. So, to have, um, to have the feedback before the legislative breakfast? That would be ideal, okay. Yes, thank you. And is, and is that thing, please, uh, for you? Yeah, okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you. All right. And lastly, board accomplishments. So, we had discussed, and we had some additional discussion about board accomplishments, CTPF accomplishments, we came to the conclusion it's all the same. So, um, we were just gonna each share, um, one accomplishment. I know we, we've had, uh, many, um, that we are particularly proud of, or, you know, just want to reiterate to the public that we've, um, been able to, to see to fruition, uh, for this particular school year. So, um, Ms. Ms. Brenda Thomas, did you have something? If not, I can come back to you.
Well, I guess our main accomplishment is getting the contractors what they want, and so they won't come back after us anymore. That's about it, homie.
I love your candor. Thank you, Ms. Brenda Thomas. Okay, um, Ms. Linda Warren, do you want to start and just work our way down?
Sure. Um, I'm happy, uh, that we accomplished, uh, that the fact that all schools have school improvement plans. I think that's a very important, um, uh, contribution to the schools, and I'm looking forward to its ongoing changes and growth, and, uh, as it's implemented successfully in next school.
Thank you.
Certainly. Um, so, I think there is a, a great deal for this board to be proud of, um, that we've accomplished, not only, uh, this past full year, but also in just our first two years. Uh, I would note the renaming policy that we drafted in pass, um, it was deep and complex work. Um, I'm very proud of the work that we've done to ensure inclusive and respectful learning environments for all of our students. Um, so, I would definitely point to that as something that, uh, I can tip my hat to.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, what is your, your top item, Mr.?
I, thank you, Chairman Wally. Uh, you know, mine is, is the reason that we're physically here tonight. We, we needed a bigger venue to recognize all, all the groups and individuals who are state champions, and in, in a very wide breadth of what it is to be in Charles County Public Schools. They represented academic accomplishments with Mesa and robotics, performing arts, and athletics. And some of those teams and people went on to the national level with Destination Imagination Competition and AXO Competition. And it just reinforces the fact that if you take advantage of what Charles County Public Schools has to offer, you can do great things. Thank you.
Mr. Hancock?
Thank you. Mike kind of stole my thunder there a little bit. That's okay, that's okay. But...
I know, we've done that a lot.
I can add on to that. It's, uh, you know, I, I'm proud to be able to, uh, work alongside all of you all to help, uh, provide the tools necessary for, uh, that many students to be at this rate. That, that's amazing. That's amazing. And then, you know, just last week, we attended the Be the Difference Award, to look out and to see a packed cafeteria at North Point with so many individuals that sacrifice daily for this system. And then I think back to our last board meeting, and all of those staff members that we recognized. And, you know, that is something to not just be proud of, but to be in awe of, really, to just kind of say, wow, there's that many people that devote so much time to this system. And, you know, we are thrilled to award them, and they are just humbled and thrilled to receive the award that we give them, but they deserve so much more. And I'm just grateful for the people that, that make this system work.
Well, I want to brag, I want to brag on what we did, about the board accomplishment to establish an African-American History Textbook Committee to include representation from parents, students, community organizations, teachers, and professors. It lies in bringing a new African-American history textbooks to high, to the high school program. And I say that in awe is because that is equitable, and that's diversity that we have put in the school. And having an AP African-American is very important to all students, not their son, but all. So being able to cross that line and be able to bring that to the school and bring it to our students, that means that, you know, we have went, you know, we went to another level, and making sure that our students are educated when they get into the real world.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So like my colleagues, I think that this board has accomplished quite a bit, more than we could state, in just one statement for each of us this evening. And that's a testament to the work that we have all done collectively, along with the superintendent and staff. So just wanted to acknowledge everyone who's been a part of this. This is sort of a, it's like group work, right? It's a group project.
Absolutely.
And so when I say that the board has accomplished it, like Ms. Wally said, you know, it's, it's, you know, the school system's accomplishments, the board's accomplishment, it's all of our accomplishments. And so I'm, one of the things, one of the many things I'm most proud of is the Equity and Inclusion Resolutions that we passed this year. For the first time ever, we have a Native American, Alaska Native Heritage Month Resolution, which was just, you know, long overdue, given the fact that we have Native tribes that still exist here today, and that attend our public schools and work in our public schools, some others, Jewish American Heritage Month, Caribbean American Heritage Month, Autism Awareness, World Down Syndrome Day, Mental Health Awareness, and several more. So I just really wanted to highlight that, because that, those resolutions, the purpose of those recognitions is to align with the CCPS core values of equity and inclusivity, and it's an endeavor to ensure that all members of our school community, including staff, students, and family members feel seen, valued, and celebrated. And so for that, I'm very proud of that.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. I wholeheartedly agree. This is definitely not the work of the board alone, by any means. We have a phenomenal staff, teachers, administrators, that we're very, very proud to work with every day, very much appreciate our volunteers, and the love that they have for our school system, that they literally give up their free time because they so believe in CCPS in our students. So I deeply regret that I was not able to attend the Be the Difference Awards. It's one of the things I most look forward to. Thank you to Ms. Kramer, Mr. Lucas, Mr. Hancock for representing on our behalf. To that end, I will add my own, very, very excited about our international teachers. I believe we couldn't decide, was it nine or ten? Nine. Nine, it was nine, okay. I thought, yeah. So to see them come from all over the world, for them to feel at home in Charles County, for the students to accept them, shout out to Ms. Majors, I know you were kind of like their mother, in some ways, you know what I mean? And really, truly helped them adjust in every possible way. And to me, that's what our community is all about. I love the diversity, I love what they're, they're bringing, I love what our students are learning. And if I could also indulge, incredibly excited about the opening of our first immersion program in Arthur Middleton. I mean, we are really, truly doing some amazing things. So thank you all so very much to our millions of viewers around the world now. And if there is nothing further, you have one, you have unfinished questions?
No, no, I want to add one more, because this is from the student. They said that our policy for the dress code, that's the best thing...
I know the students, not just there. Yeah, I know, there's quite a few students that would be, yeah. Students, a previous mom, yes.
I asked my bookie, bookie, she said, no, y'all have, she said, that's the best ever.
All right, it's the little things. All right, Ms. Brenda Thomas, we've come to your portion of the evening. Would you like to move to adjourn?
I'm voting to adjourn.
Is there a second? I assume there's no discussion. All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Please take a step there.
Thank you, Brenda. I feel better.
Yeah.